Well, it looks like we have quite a crowd here tonight. We hope the city is safe while all of our fire department or the majority of them are in here. And we hope that the Fire Marshal doesn't tell us to vacate part of the building here. Welcome, everybody. The City Council has been in session since six o'clock. I will wait until later, Mr. City Attorney, to make any announcements or to ask you to make any announcements. So I will call to order right now the regular meeting of the City Council for the City of Loma Linda. This is May 13. And ask for the roll call.
Councilman Zipper.
Present.
Councilman Peterson.
Present.
Councilman Rigsby.
Here.
Mayor Potemperie-Brower.
Here.
Mayor Christman.
Present.
All present.
Thank you. At this stage in the meeting, we are going to turn it over to our fire department. So however it's going to proceed, please proceed. Please stand, the flag will be coming in shortly.
on our nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for the invocation. Let us pray. Father God, we come before you tonight thanking you for the rich blessings that you have bestowed upon this community, upon this city, and upon our fire department. Lord, we thank you for the opportunity to serve. To make man whole is the motto of this city. This is the mission that has been carried out so admirably for so many years. We thank you for your blessing upon this special service about this time of recognition. We ask that you will bless each of these firefighters, engineers, captains, battalion chiefs, and the chief. May you give them wisdom, may you give them knowledge, may you give them direction as they fulfill their calling. May you give the City Council and all of the members of our city wisdom and direction to continue to serve according to your plan and guidance. I pray this, and thanks again. Amen. Please be seated.
Mayor Christman and councilmen, for the next few minutes, what we'll be doing is basically honoring a few of our standing members and really celebrating some outstanding additions to our department. This is, in some case, really a culmination of events that you set forth in December when you appointed Councilman Rigsby, Councilman Peterson, to work with Mr. Holloway and remaining command staff in looking into some issues that, critical issues, the department was facing. Since that time, your decisions to reinvest in our command staff, to solidify the workforce, Mr. Holloway and I have worked pretty hard and committed to that mission since that time. And tonight, I think you'll see, when we're done, we've really brought in some outstanding quality to the organization to serve the community for years to come. So with that, Division Chief Crawford will introduce our promotions and our recruits to the city.
As I introduce the promotions and also the new personnel that we have here tonight, I would like to say welcome and thank you to all of the family members and friends who are here. This is a special time for these men, a special time of recognition. I'd also like to personally echo Chief Bender and just saying to Mayor and members of the council, thank you. There have been a lot of things that have transpired in the last few months that are exciting. We feel the excitement, and it's an honor to say thank you to you tonight. Okay, this is a time when we want to recognize some people in our department who have received promotions and also some new faces. To begin with, we will introduce some folks who are receiving promotions, and we will start with Battalion Chief Rob Rice. I'd like to have him come forward. Rob joined the Loma Linda Fire Department back in 1986, and at the time, he was working as a junior high teacher and a PE coach. And he decided to take the position of a paid-call firefighter, quickly realizing that this was really a calling, a profession that he wanted to pursue further. Since that time, Rob has worked his way through the ranks of our departments from paid-call firefighter to full-time firefighter to engineer to captain and now battalion chief. Rob has worked on numerous large fires in this area, including the Willow Fire, the Old, and the Grand Prix Fires. Most recently, he was assigned to B Shift as their captain and was also the training captain for the department. He is now assigned to C Shift as the shift battalion chief. Throughout the years, Rob has served in a variety of leadership roles in the department's associations and is proud of his contributions in working with several current council members as well as former council member Karen Gao-Hensberger to help bring the Advanced Life Support Paramedic Program to our city of Loma Linda. Rob has a lot of energy, a lot of enthusiasm, a lot of excitement that he brings to the department, and we congratulate him. His badge tonight was presented to him by his daughter Caitlin Rice. Congratulations. Now, I'd like to introduce and request Captain Jeff Gillette to come forward. Jeff is originally from Montebello, California, where he grew up in La Mirada and Cerritos. He started in the fire service as an explorer for the LA County Fire Department. After graduating from the Fire Academy, he went to work for the Narco Fire Department and got sponsored for paramedic school. I can remember when he was hired here for Loma Linda as a firefighter-paramedic back in July of 1999. He moved through the ranks as a reserve firefighter, then firefighter-paramedic, engineer, and currently has been promoted to the position of captain. He has considerable interest in the fire service, especially in the areas of urban search and rescue, fire training, emergency medical services, and grant writing. And he's been very involved with several of the grants that we have received. He's also, does have a life outside the fire service and particularly interested in traveling and sports. And so he is assigned to B Shift as captain for Truck 251. We want to introduce and congratulate Captain Jeff Gillette. Next, I'd like for Engineer Mike Atchison to come forward. Mike is from the Inland Empire and joined the Loma Linda Fire Department in August of 2001 as a reserve firefighter assigned to the B Shift. After nearly a year as a reserve firefighter, he was promoted to paid-call firefighter. And then in 2004, he was assigned to the B Shift. He was recognized as a firefighter of the year by the department membership for his work in local community organizations like the Big Hearts for Little Hearts and the Ronald McDonald House. In June of 2004, Mike was promoted to apprentice firefighter. In October of 2006, he was promoted to firefighter and was assigned to the C Shift. He was then offered an acting engineer's position in December of 2007 and promoted to the full fire engineer in March of 2008, so he's brand-new. Mike, though, brought a lot of preparation to this position because he had achieved his certification as driver-operator, and then at any opportunity that he could to steal the engineer's seat, he was jumping into that opportunity, right? And so he took and passed the engineer's exam in 2007. He was able to work as an acting engineer on several occasions, and kind of a highlight was when there was a strike team request in August, and he worked for 14 days on the Zaca Fire in Santa Barbara County. Mike enjoys the work as an engineer. He approaches his job with enthusiasm and interest, and he enjoys getting greasy and dirty and doing all the things that entails. He has been very involved with the Firefighters Association, serving in positions as treasurer and secretary from 2002 until 2007. He is now the president of IAFF Local 3603. He shows a lot of interest in the fire service, a lot of interest in our department, and he has been able to well-use his background in training in business administration. And on his off-time, then he works at his father's freight brokerage. So I'd like to introduce and congratulate Engineer Mike Atchison. Okay, at this time, we have some familiar faces but some new faces, and we'd first like to introduce Battalion Chief Steve Jones. I'd like to also ask his wife Julie Jones to come forward. Steve actually is a local boy, having grown up in Loma Linda. He joined the Loma Linda Fire Department as a paid-call firefighter in April 1 of 1988. Two years later, he had the opportunity to go to Northern California as a member of a strike team of engines and worked in the Red Bluff area, Northern California. If you know where that is, that's way north, and he was there for seven days. And after realizing the excitement, the enthusiasm, and the hard, dirty work of that strike team, he decided that this was the career that he wanted to pursue. So as soon as he got back, he immediately enrolled in the Crafton Hills Fire Academy and began the long process of testing for full-time employment. Steve was hired by the Victorville Fire Department as a firefighter in 1991. He spent over four years there gaining very valuable experience. In 1995, Steve was hired by the Redondo Beach Fire Department as a firefighter. He has been there for the last 13 years prior to coming here to Loma Linda. He worked his way up through the ranks from firefighter to engineer and then captain. While there, he had a tremendous amount of experience. He brings over 20 years of experience here to Loma Linda and very, very involved and enthused about training and also safety and grant writing as well. He holds various certifications and also has a degree in fire science. When the opportunity arose to come back to the Loma Linda Fire Department as a battalion chief, Steve thought and considered this very, very carefully. It was a decision that he decided was best, but, you know, one after a lot of thought, I know, that went into it, and a lot of meetings and a lot of investigation. But since this is the town where he grew up, he felt that it was an exciting opportunity to work with people that he knew and could trust, and we're very glad to have him. Steve would like to thank people who have encouraged and inspired him throughout his career. First, he would like to thank Julie, his wife of 15 years, who stood beside him and encouraged him to go after his goals. His son Tal, who's changed his entire life and has given him inspiration and purpose in life as well. He would also like to give very special thanks to Captain Mike Parsons from the Redondo Beach Fire Department, who believed in him as a firefighter and who is still a tremendous role model for him each and every day. He would also like to thank Dave Buckner, who has not only worked alongside Steve since 1991, but for the trust, confidence, and friendship that he has given him for the last 17 years. So I'd like to introduce and congratulate Battalion Chief Steve Jones. Now, I'd like to ask Captain James Gray to come forward, and I'd also like to invite his wife Kathleen Gray to come forward for the presentation. James goes by the name of Jamie. He joins our fire department here in Loma Linda after 19 years with the City of Colton Fire Department. We're very pleased to see members of the Colton Fire Department that are here in support tonight. In those years in Colton, he achieved the ranks of firefighter, firefighter-paramedic, and engineer. He also served as one of Colton's lead fire investigators for 10 years. Jamie has a background that's quite extensive, including elevator construction and installation. He's a tradesman. He's a cabinet maker par excellence, by the way. Beautiful work. And he uses this background as an outstanding platform for his fire service career. He brings a wealth of knowledge and experience to our department. He is very willing and ready and able to share that knowledge with the members of his team, and it's very common for you to see him outside with his crew pulling hoes, raising ladders, and all of those things that firefighters need to know how to do. He's a hands-on person. He wants to thank in particular Chief Hendricks and Battalion Chief Musgrave from the Colton Fire Department for their friendship and years of outstanding experiences and memories there. So we're very pleased to introduce and to congratulate Captain Jamie Gray. I'd next like to introduce and request firefighter-paramedic Nate Boucher to come forward, and also like to request his father Dave to come for the presentation. As I said, Nate is a firefighter-paramedic. He has been assigned to the B Shift on Medic Engine 251 under Captain Gray. Nate credits his eight-year-old son Colin as giving him the purpose and motivation to leave corporate America to pursue his goal of a career in the fire service. During this pursuit, Nate worked multiple jobs to make ends meet. He's very appreciative of the opportunity that's given to him by the City of Loma Linda Fire Department. He brings with him valuable experience as a paramedic with AMR, American Medical Response. He has a background in training and is the lead instructor with the Crafton Hills Fire Academy. He states that it was a blessing when he was at the Fire Academy, he was surrounded by 30 to 40 guys with the same passion that he felt. The cadets at the Fire Academy will always hold a special place in his heart, and so we want to again introduce and congratulate firefighter-paramedic Nate Boucher. I'd like to request firefighter-paramedic Ryan Steslicky to come forward, and also like to request his father Lou Steslicky, who is a division chief with the Upland Fire Department, to come for the presentation. Ryan is assigned as firefighter-paramedic for the A Shift, assigned to Medic Squad 251. It was only moments after starting his first shift that he responded to a critical medical aid and quickly demonstrated the outstanding advanced life support skills that he demonstrated during our recruitment process. Ryan was a member of Crafton Hills Fire Academy Class Number 65, which graduated in 2007. He credits his tight-knit fire service family with the inspiration to pursue a career in the fire service. Ryan also has a passion for flying. Whenever possible, he likes to get up in the air with his Cessna 172 out of Cable Airport in Upland. Didn't know that about you, that's neat. Ryan would like to extend his thanks to his dad Lou, to his mother Pam, and to his sisters Katie and Kara for their support in his pursuits. When he finishes his probationary year, he plans to complete his education goals of a bachelor's degree and fire service classes. He would like to promote through the engineer and captain's ranks during his tenure here in Loma Linda Fire Department. And again, we'd like to introduce and congratulate firefighter-paramedic Ryan Steslicky. I'd now like to have firefighter Scott Albright come forward, and I'd also like to have his brother Mark Albright, who is a firefighter-paramedic with the Ontario Fire Department, to come forward for the presentation. Scott is assigned to the A Shift on Truck 251. He is a mechanic. He has been a mechanic in one form or another since the age of 17, and for the last three years, he worked as a fire apparatus mechanic for the San Bernardino County Fire Department. So he's very familiar with our fire apparatus, because that's where we take them for service. He credits this experience along with the encouragement of his brother for getting the pursuit of the fire service under his belt. Scott has a tremendous skill set. He's a tremendous asset to our department, and we know that we will be tapping his skills quite a bit in the future. He was a member of the Crafton Hills Fire Academy Class Number 66, in which he was a squad leader. Off-duty, he enjoys drag racing, his 1970 Camaro, and he builds hot rods. After completing his probationary year, he would like to continue his education, possibly paramedic school, and get more involved with the department's apparatus and equipment program. So again, I'd like to introduce and congratulate firefighter Scott Albright. Now, I'd like for firefighter Nick Gray to come forward, and also like to invite his mother Kathleen Gray to come for the presentation. This may look familiar. His father comes forward too. This is an all-in-the-family affair. Nick has been assigned to the C Shift and Truck 251. He credits growing up in a fire service family and the deep admiration for his father for inspiring him to pursue a career in the fire service. Nick has worked as an EMT in Los Angeles County and is a paid-call firefighter in Cherry Valley. Nick also brings a valuable mechanical skill set to our department. We know that that will be a tremendous asset to us and serve him well as he goes through his career in the fire service. After his probationary year, Nick would like to pursue paramedic training. He would like to broaden his skills and his abilities to provide for the citizens of Loma Linda. Nick would like to say thank you to his dad and his mother for their support and encouragement in achieving his goal of becoming a firefighter. So again, I introduce and congratulate firefighter Nick Gray.
So Mayor, council, and members of the community, as I stated a few minutes ago, I am very proud of the group that we brought into the city to serve the community, and I think we're in good heads for years to come. So thanks for your support in supporting these men, and council and mayor, your support in getting here. So again, welcome to the members.
I would be remiss, though, if I didn't also introduce some other people who are a significant part of our fire department, and that is our support staff, and we're very pleased to have them with us here tonight. So if I may, I would like for three people to come up in front so they can be introduced to you, and that is Executive aide Terry Rudolph, Administrative Specialist II Wendy Abellgard, and Nurse Educator Stacy Price, who we share with Loma Linda University Medical Center and the City of Colton Fire Department. So we'd like to introduce these three to you as a significant part of our department as well. And now I'd like to have the honor and the privilege to turn the time over to our mayor, Mr. Christman.
Thank you, Mr. Crawford. Isn't this wonderful? I am thrilled to death with what is happening with our fire department. As was mentioned earlier, there for a while, we were looking at different options, and we came to the decision that our best option was to build with what we had, and I'm very happy we did so. When we were trying to figure out exactly what to do, I talked to Jeff Bender, and I also talked to Captain Battalion Chief Jeff Roddy, and we struggled with several options. And we decided that what we wanted to do was build a fire department that the City of Loma Linda could be very, very proud of. And folks, we are there, and I congratulate all of you. And folks, we are there, and I congratulate all of you. We will make a short announcement before we introduce Jeff Bender as our new fire chief, but we had asked that our former fire chief and former city manager Peter Hills be with us this evening. He flew down here this afternoon to be with us, and before he made the presentation this evening, he decided he wanted to have his appendix out first. So as we speak, he is either in surgery or just recently out of surgery.
Mr. Mayor.
And not too many people probably had a whole caravan of firemen take them to the ER, but Peter Hills probably had that privilege.
Mr. Mayor, I have a report. The appendix was very angry and it is out, and he's doing well.
Well, that's the other irony here, even though he has retired and moved to Northern California, Dr. Dusty Rigsby is his primary care physician still. So, thank you, Dr. Rigsby. And before I make the presentation of Dr., uh, I'm sorry, not doctor, but Jeff Bender, I'm getting all confused here, I do want to thank Battalion Chief Jeff Roddy, because he did a lot during the transition of making sure that everything came into place, and I do thank you publicly for all of your efforts. And now, when we first put this program together, Jeff Bender says, "I'm not sure it would be appropriate to go directly from being a captain to a chief of a department. Why don't you let me be deputy chief for six months to see if I can handle the job?" Now let me tell you something, there was no doubt in my mind that he could handle the job, but there must have been some doubt in his mind as to whether he wanted the job. Am I correct on that? And I am very thrilled when he finally said, "I am ready for the job." So we have here tonight, Mr. Tom Hendricks, who is the fire chief from the City of Colton, who we thank for helping to train Jeff Bender, and he is here to install him as our new fire chief for the City of Loma Linda. So please come forward and congratulations from me.
Mayor Christman and Council members, it's both an honor and a privilege to be here tonight, to be able to present Chief Bender, have a tendency to call him Jeff, to present Chief Bender with his chief's badge. I see many, many friends out here. The City of Loma Linda Fire Department and the Colton Fire Department has a very long history and heritage of working very closely together. I think one of our first joint training exercises was nineteen-seventy-three, when I was a rookie firefighter and Chief Hills was a new captain. So we do have a long tradition of working together, we work very, very well together, as evidenced by two of our former members who are now Loma Linda firefighters, and I'm speaking about Captain Gray and Chief Bender, but that's okay, we're glad they're close by and will continue our history of working together. I've known Chief Bender and his family for many, many years. I first knew Jeff as a young paid call firefighter for Loma Linda Fire Department, and I've watched him over the years grow into the respected professional that he is today. Nineteen-seventy-eight, or nineteen-ninety-eight, City of Colton Fire Department hired Chief Bender as a firefighter paramedic, and we hired him not only for his emergency medical skills, but also we were looking for the future, and we had identified Chief Bender as a future leader. And honestly, we hired him and we were looking forward to that day that he would move up into the ranks. Unfortunately, in two thousand five, Loma Linda Fire Department offered him a chance to come back, and I, he thought about it, it's not an easy task to change jobs, but he came back over here, and when he came, I knew someday he would be the chief of Loma Linda Fire Department. Chief Bender has got both the management skills, the technical skills, and the innovation to lead Loma Linda Fire Department into the future, but he's also got something else, and that's the appreciation for the history and the heritage of the community and the fire department. And all of these skills together is going to help him bring your department together and move forward into the, into the future and wisely serve your community. I'd like to congratulate the City of Loma Linda for their selection of Chief Bender, and Jeff, congratulations, you've earned it.
Chief Hendricks, thank you, again, for probably a long history of a leadership example as well as filling in for Chief Hills here at the last minute, so we appreciate that, I do. And Mayor and Council, for your confidence, your support, Councilman Rigsby and Peterson for staying engaged very closely as we work through issues and build this department, I really appreciate that, and, uh... And Mr. Holloway, I think we've dealt with these issues daily since we made the decision, so thanks for your patience and working with me and your support. As well as all these guys, we've missed a couple Little League games already, and anyway, I appreciate your understanding and time and support, so. Also, I look around the room, members of the community, council, council people that when I was young in town, I inspired and helped build this place, institutional members that I've also grown up working with and working under, and I think all these things have really culminated in really me being a good fit for this job, so I appreciate that. I'm especially proud of our members in the department. Policymakers and administrators, we can make decisions, but it really takes the members to take those, drive those, and help drive a culture, and as the mayor pointed out, that is happening in our department. This is a proud moment for me, to see what's happening, see the transition, and I thank all of you for investing in this community, big changes for many, for several of you, and joining me to move the department forward, so thank you. And I want to thank my dad, so, probably the best example for unselfish service to this community especially, so.
I have your new pin, Fire Chief Bender, you've got a beautiful family here, and I'm going to ask two people to come up here and help to put it on. One is a former fire chief, Roland Crawford, and Don Bender, I would appreciate it if you would come forward also. Don, why don't you put it on? Most men don't know how to put corsages on, and I see you're in that category, Don.
Thank you. For those that aren't staying for the other issues that the Council has to address tonight, please join us in a reception directly across the hall here in the community room, so. And again, thank you all for coming, look forward to visiting in the community.
Mr. Mayor, there's actually something else that a lot of community don't know, that our fire chief is also a registered nurse.
That's a good point.
And I had him in class, and he knows stats.
Hey, look forward to all your good work.
Thank you, sir.
Quite a, quite a group, impressive. Yep, yep, congratulations, Ron.
Thank you, sir. It's going well, isn't it? All right, how are you? I warned you, but I didn't warn you far enough that I, you had the, okay. Okay, I've got you on next. These autographs can make worth a million bucks someday, too. Fine, learned a lot tonight. It's my son, yeah. A what, boys? Really? Well, how come you still don't get me now? Oh, okay, yeah, that's my son. You bet. Okay, I will call the meeting back to order. We already took the oral call. Mr. City Attorney, I will go ahead and ask you to make any comments concerning closed session, and I presume it's okay with our Chairman of the Redevelopment Agency if you speak to any items that were handled there also?
Yes, sir.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Chairman, as you know, we were in closed session prior to the ceremonial portion of our meeting, and we dealt with items number one on the Council agenda and number one on the agency agenda. Both of those matters were real property matters, where the Council and Board gave direction to the negotiating representatives as listed on the agenda, as to the properties listed on the agenda. There was no final action from closed session to report at this time.
Thank you. And Mr. City Manager, any items to be added or deleted?
There are none, Mayor.
This is a time for oral reports from the public or items that are of general interest that are not on the agenda, and we have several. First of all, Jane Dreher, who is our new Public Information Officer for San Bernardino Associated Governments, I asked her to be here at seven o'clock, and she's been waiting patiently. here at 7:00, and she's been waiting patiently.
It's okay.
And we welcome you.
Thank you. I enjoyed it, and congratulations to those firefighters. Thank you for having me tonight. Mayor Christman asked me to come and give you an update on the Tippi Canoe Interchange Project, the Anderson Tippi Canoe, I-10. Tonight, I'm not going to give you an update on the design elements of the project. You got that a couple months ago from our engineers and project managers, but rather, tonight, I'm going to give you an update on what we're doing in community outreach. We have two special meetings coming up, and I wanted to inform you of those. The first one is tomorrow night, we have been invited to come to the neighborhood group in the northeast quadrant of the intersection. That would be San Bernardino, and that's the area where the residents, primarily residential, and they will be impacted by this project. They have invited us to come and speak. Yes, I can do that. They have invited us to come and speak and give them an update on that project tomorrow at Victoria Adventist Church on the corner of Mountain View and Colston Street, and we will be taking our engineers, our project managers, Caltrans people, and right-of-way property experts, and we will be showing them detailed maps.
This might be the wrong call point.
Well, I'm gonna... This is the next one. I don't have a slide on that one. I'm just going to give you an overview so you know that I'm going to San Bernardino tomorrow night, but in June, we have planned a more open public meeting, and that's what this one is. It's a community open house on Tuesday, June 17th. We would like to invite you and your community. We'll be doing a lot of publicity on this, and it's going to be an open house style. We won't really be given a presentation, but we will have extensive maps. We have large five-foot aerial maps of the whole project area, and the public can come anytime between 5:30 and 7:30 to Victoria Elementary. We will be giving them a fact sheet, which I have given to you here this evening, and I will leave some in the back of the room. And on the fact sheet, we tell... We kind of overview the need for the improvement, which is obvious, and an overview of the project, the main goals we want to achieve with this project, the design elements, and there's a simplified map up in the right-hand corner of the back of that page for people to understand. We have very complex maps, but sometimes they're hard to follow. We'll be reviewing the project costs and funding sources and the timeline. So, at this time, I just wanted to update you so you know we're trying to reach out to everyone. It's going to take... It'll be at least two years before construction begins. We're in environmental stage now, but... So, your community knows it impacts Loma Linda as well as San Bernardino, and we appreciate the cooperation between both communities and the elected officials in both communities, working with Sandbag and the different alternative options, and one that looks like it's going to be the final. But they will be doing... Receiving input from people tomorrow, and then again on the 17th. So, if anyone has some things they would like to talk about, we'll be receiving them and writing, and that will become part of the environmental document. So, we would like to invite you to come, and your community to come. So, that's about all. I'm not going to get into the design, but would you like to make a comment?
Well, I want to very specifically say this is June 17, not May 17.
Right.
For the meeting at the Victoria School.
Right. Did I say May? I'm sorry. June 17.
No, maybe you didn't. I'm just clarifying since we're very close to May 17 also.
May 14th is tomorrow night at the church, and it's Dr. Ron Graybill's group, Norton Neighborhoods. You're probably familiar with that from Loma Linda University Medical Center sponsors those community outreach programs. He invited us to come. The people are very concerned, so we want to calm their concerns and give them as much information as possible. So, I think that's the right process, and we're looking forward to keeping them informed as well as your community.
Okay. Any questions? Thank you for coming.
Yeah, you're welcome.
The next item is the fact that we had a ribbon cutting at 5:00 this evening for a new arsenic removal facility that the city owns down on Cooley Drive in San Bernardino. And Senator Bob Dutton had his representative there with a certificate for Jarb, Dypat, and his department, but somehow didn't get around to handing it to you. So, I am handing it to you right now, Jarb, and congratulations on your new facility. And then, Mr. Jim Walling. I didn't... There you are. We did not place this on the agenda, so therefore, we will not be able to take any action on this item tonight, but we have had a city committee looking at naming of the hills, so please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilman. A few weeks back, you asked the Trails Committee in conjunction with the Parks and Recreation Historical Committees to meet, come up with a procedure, and come back to you with recommended names, at least three, for the city-owned land in the hills south of town. We've done that. We had a joint meeting last night, and I think you each have a letter listing, actually, five names, because the third name was Thai, Three Way Thai. If you'd like for me to read those, I will. The first was Loma Linda South Hills Preserve. The second was Loma Linda South Hills Park, and in third place, Thai Three Ways for South Hills Park, South Hills Preserve, or Loma Linda Wildlands Conservancy. So, on behalf of the committee members and the public, this was open to the public for several weeks, inviting as much input as possible, and we had about 109 names to choose from, I want to thank you for the opportunity to be involved in what we hope is a historic process. Thank you.
Mr. Zepri.
Thank you to the committee and Jim for your help, and the other chairs who worked together with you. And I'd like to suggest, Mr. Mayor, that this go on our agenda for the next council meeting. We have the names in front of us, and we'll have a couple of weeks' time to consider the choice that we would like to make out of the nominations.
I might suggest that since we have narrowed it down to these three names, if any members of the public wish to give further input based on these three names, that they contact Mr. Walling, who's the Chairman of the Trails Committee. I'm a little disappointed that Verico's Hills or Root Canal Canyon isn't in that set of names. I thought that would have been nice for a health-conscious city, but it didn't go there.
It can always be for the name of a particular trail, so you're not out of luck.
Floyd.
Mr. Mayor, I have no idea who suggested these names. I'm not very excited. Several of them, there's a redundancy, because the word hill in Spanish and in English is both in the same name. Loma, I understand, means hill. In Spanish, is that correct?
Yes.
So, we've got hill, beautiful, south hill. It's a redundancy.
Well, you're getting too technical on us, Floyd. But go ahead.
You know, so I'm... I thought we'd come up with something a little more exciting, but...
Well, you had your chance. Turn it in.
I know. I'm sorry. I didn't weigh in on it.
Any other comments? Okay, thank you. One letter that I didn't get around to reading, because I had too many papers on my desk here, was a congratulations letter from the Apple Valley Fire Protection District, so I will ask that this be placed on the next agenda, and we'll deal with it at that time. But I see a couple of firemen at the back of the room, and I just didn't get to that.
Mr. Mayor, one other very minor point that we don't need to take up too much tonight, but there is a map of the Loma Linda City land and trails in the South Hills, and I know the Chamber of Commerce has been working on potentially putting an inset map in the chamber map. Had a chance to talk to Mr. Walling and a couple of the staff members, and there's an issue as to how we can display this legally, and what I'd like to do, I know I talked to both Jarb and Deborah about it, I would like to suggest that Mr. Walling, along with they, confer with the city attorney on what is appropriate and legal so we can have an idea, because the chamber would like to start being able to show our trail system, but I don't want to break any rules in doing it. And we have some trail connection issues. I know Jarb's been negotiating on some things with the flood control, but that might also come back for a report from the city attorney and staff next meeting.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and I have three cards from people that wish to speak. Noel Christensen, please. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, for the record, my name is Noel Christensen. I reside with my wife at 25831 Emerson Street here in Loma Linda. The item that I asked to speak on this evening can really be summarized by the sign that's posted near the gate to the dog park on Beaumont Avenue. Now, just read a bit of it. Starts out, "Attention. Please be sensitive to the fact that this dog park is located in a residential neighborhood. Excessive barking is disturbing to the residents living close by and will not be tolerated. Please be sure to remove your dog from the park if it's barking excessively." Those three sentences really summarize, as I say, why I'm here this evening. The dog barking really is a problem. It really is unable to be controlled by the city, and even though it says it won't be tolerated, there really aren't any means to cease the parking that is going on. We live across the street from the dog park. It was constructed in 2002. The tract of homes we live in were built in 1978, 1979. My wife and I purchased our home in 1980, and we were the first purchasers of that home. Many of our neighbors have lived there also since 1978, '79, or 1980. The dog park is located about 60 feet from my back property line. In fact, all the homes along Emerson Street that are on the south side of Emerson Street back up to Beaumont Avenue, and there is no separation other than the road between ourselves and the dog park. Almost every evening, there's what I would consider to be excessive dog barking, but it's not necessarily one dog continually, but a round robin effect, so it's hard to pick out one dog and say, "This dog is the problem." Occasionally, it is one dog, and on four occasions, I have gone up to the park and asked the owner if they would control the dog. First time I did that, the man leashed his four dogs, went out the gate, and then turned one of them loose on me. The dog bit me, and I had to go to the doctor and have some treatment. The second time I went up there, there were probably about 20 people in there with their dogs, and I was invited to do certain things to myself, which I can't repeat this evening. And one of the nicer things was, if you don't like it, why don't you sell your home and move? Now, perhaps we should be tolerant of our neighbors, the occasional people who come through with their dogs, who let their dogs behave in this fashion. And it's not really the dog's problem, the dog's fault, I should say, because it's a case where the dog owner is not properly handling the dog. But something really should be done. I've spoken with your staff on several occasions. I think the Public Works Director has probably done about as much as he can do, and it's most likely out of his hands, because he did, I think he was instrumental in helping get the small dog park, which was really a serious problem, moved out of the area and around the corner into the park area next to the basketball courts and the tennis court. But we still have a situation where people with small dogs bring their dogs into the large dog park, so we really haven't solved anything from that standpoint. But I'd like to have you consider some way to maybe come up with a solution where the dog barking would be monitored in some fashion by the city and could be controlled to the point where the property owners have to be, in effect, putting themselves at risk to try to get the dog owners to control the dogs. I know you can't act or respond on it this evening. If the law is still the same as it was when I was a city engineer some years back. However, I am in the phone book, and feel free to call me and provide any comments that you have as far as whether I should be more tolerant of the dogs, or any suggestions you might have. Thank you.
Just a quick question. Has the problem escalated significantly in the last year, six months, or what kind of pattern has it followed?
Well, the wintertime probably has less usage than the summertime. The summertime, you have later daylight hours. You have a situation where more people are able to get out there and bring their dogs in the park in the evening. The summertime is really the main problem. I would say that probably over about the last two to two and a half years, it has been continually getting worse, and this is most likely because of the fact that the word is getting around, hey, there's a dog park, and it's a good place to go. And the people obviously enjoy going there. They have their friends they can talk with every night while the dogs are running around and barking or whatever. But I couldn't say that it's over the last six months or a year, anything like that.
Certainly, the last couple of years, you've noticed a consistent...
Yes, it's just been a continual uphill...
Thank you.
Now, my understanding was that when we built the additional dog parks there at the south end of Holda Crooks Park, that the smaller dogs were going to go there, and the smaller dogs yap and bark more, and the bigger dogs would be in the park there along Banning, or Beaumont Road. Is that the way it's still going, Jarb?
Yes, sir. But what the problem is, like Mr. Noel Christensen said, that there's a dog owner that bring the small dog to the big dog park, and vice versa. We have people complaining about people with the big dog, take the big dog to the small dog park, too, so...
Passing orders where the big dogs can go ahead and eat the little dogs if that happens?
That was a complaint, yes.
Bob?
Is the time during the afternoon worse? I'm trying to get an idea of the weekend particularly bad, or is it bad all the time? Or is it more just the evenings on the weekends, or evenings every night?
Weekends probably have more usage, and they might start earlier, perhaps in the morning, 10:00, 11:00, but it's sporadic. And then, the afternoon, the afternoon usage probably begins around 3:00, 4:00, and then tapers off around 6:00, and then picks up again after 6:00. The evening is probably the worst. In fact, before I came down this evening, my wife and I went out into the backyard for about 15 minutes and finally just had to give it up and come back inside.
Has it made any difference since we opened up the new dog park down on Holda Crooks Park?
It did initially, because the gate for the easterly portion of the parks on Beaumont Avenue was locked, and a sign was put on that gate that said, "The small dog park has been moved to Holda Crooks Park," or something to that effect. But then, about maybe two or three weeks ago, that gate was unlocked, and so people walk into that. A lot of the people with small dogs walk into that and don't pay any attention to that sign any more than they pay attention to the sign that says, "Please be sensitive to the fact that it's in a residential area." So, to answer your question, yes, it has improved if all the... As far as the small dogs go, and if all the small dogs were taken over to the Holda Crooks Park location, it'd be a much greater improvement, but all the small dogs are. And every little dog and every large dog, dogs just stake out his own area and start barking to make sure that no one comes into that area, or run around and chase and barking at each other. But it's not really the dog's problem. It's a situation where the dog owners haven't trained their dogs, and they just sit there and look at them while they're running and barking, and literally say, "Well, he's just very active tonight."
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
I should mention also, we do have a class from Loma Linda Academy here, economic students, approximately 15 of them. They had me sign a card saying they were here, and so I hope they stay till the end of the meeting. If it gets boring, we apologize. That's what it's all about, too. That's what it's all about, too. But I hope you learned something tonight. And I have a card from Kathy Glimmerich.
Recently, a flyer was sent to citizens which makes numerous false and libelous statements about Ovi Papescu, who's currently running for city council. This flyer misleads citizens about lawsuits which developers have filed against the city and which Save Loma Linda members came in to defend against the developers. I'd like to briefly address it because I think these flyers are being sent to influence citizens' decisions on who to vote for, and I think citizens are entitled to information and the truth. First off.
This isn't a place to do campaigning, though, so.
I'm not campaigning. I'm talking about important city issues.
Okay.
Issues which we often hear the leaders from the front talk about, so. First off, citizens should ask themselves who's paying, who's likely paying for the flyers and who these tactics benefit. Additionally, the court, the appellate court recently issued a tentative decision that Save Loma Linda's referenda petitions complied with the law and that the University Village and Orchard Park project should be placed on the ballot at the next regularly scheduled election. The court's decision is tentative. It's not final. I want to make that clear. But it looks like citizens will be able to vote on whether they want the two largest land use projects in the city's history. Due to ongoing misrepresentations about the lawsuits, I'd like to briefly address them. First off, developers or their agents have now filed three lawsuits against the city. Save Loma Linda and its members, including Papescu, came into the lawsuits to defend the citizens' right to vote and to defend Measure V. To quote one of the presidential candidates, "When a half-truth is told as if it is the whole truth, sometimes it becomes an untruth." The following information might be helpful. In 2005, the council approved University Village and Orchard Park. The projects include approximately 2,500 housing units and approximately 60,000 additional daily car trips. Holland Partners is the developer of the Orchard Park project, and Lewis Holmes is the developer of University Village. Save Loma Linda filed petitions with the city, signed by over 1,400 citizens, which required the council to reverse approval of the projects or put them on the ballot, and the council put the projects on the ballot. Subsequently, an agent of Holland Partners and Lewis Holmes filed a lawsuit against the city and against Jay Galant, Georgia Hodgkin, and Wayne Isaiah to try to stop citizens from voting on the 2,500 units. The council was a defendant in this lawsuit, so the council was also involved in the lawsuit. However, the council did not defend the developers' lawsuit or the citizens' right to vote. Save Loma Linda members are defending the citizens' right to vote. As I mentioned above, the Court of Appeal has issued a tentative, not, not final decision that Save Loma Linda has won the appeal, which would allow citizens to vote on the 2,500 units. Richard Cunahara, an Orchard Park developer, filed a lawsuit against the city to try to stop residents from voting on Measure V and the 2,500 units, claiming the petition should have been translated into Spanish. The city council was defendant, a defendant in this lawsuit. However, the council did not defend the developers' lawsuit or the citizens' right to vote. Save Loma Linda defended the citizens' right to vote. We won the lawsuit, which enabled the voters to adopt Measure V. In the third lawsuit, Holland Partners sued the city to try to invalidate the city's housing element, which was adopted by the city council and Measure V. A substantial portion of that lawsuit was directed against the housing element and other city actions. The city ultimately acknowledged deficiencies in that housing element, which are now costing hundreds of thousands of dollars to fix. These fees are being inappropriately and repeatedly blamed on Measure V. As I mentioned before, Save Loma Linda came into the lawsuit to help defend Measure V, the court upheld Measure V, and the Lues, the Loma Linda University exemption as constitutional and legal. Papescu has never filed a lawsuit against the city. As a last resort, Save Loma Linda has filed one lawsuit against the city. We first made countless public comments over a period of several years. We, prominent environmental groups, and numerous individuals wrote numerous letters to the council. Our concerns were ignored. When all other avenues have been exhausted, Save Loma Linda filed a lawsuit to force the city to comply with California environmental laws and the 1996 Hillside Initiative. This lawsuit is pending, so I won't comment further. Save Loma Linda members, including Papescu, have circulated petitions, successfully fought against developers' lawsuits, and fought for the citizens' right to vote because we want thoughtful, well-managed growth. We've won two of the lawsuits already, and we're likely about to win the third one. We've spent our own money to fight the developers' lawsuits. We would like for the developers to pay the fees that their lawsuits caused. However, the claim that the taxpayers would have to pay these fees is absurd and false. If the council was making reasonable decisions in the first place and responding to the residents' concerns, our actions would not have been necessary. You've heard complaints from the leadership about lawsuits and fees, but not complaints about developers who are filing the lawsuits and driving the fees. The leadership did not defend your right to vote when Save Loma Linda.
You're at five minutes now, so let's wrap it up.
Three more sentences. When Save Loma Linda came in.
I thought we had a three-minute time limit.
Yeah, and it only applies to the citizens.
I think we should end this right now.
Wrap it up, please.
It's so friendly here at City Hall for the citizens, isn't it? When Save Loma Linda came in to defend your right to vote, the leadership blamed the developers' lawsuits on citizens. I live in the city's sphere of influence, and I expect someday to be annexed into the city, which is one reason I care about what the city is turning into. On June 3, remember to vote so you can decide what kind of leadership you want to represent you.
Ovi Papescu.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
One question. Has the city ever been sued by anybody and they refused to defend?
No.
The lawsuit?
No, they haven't. And I will remind you again, this is non-political, or at least supposed to be, and please keep it to three minutes.
Mine will be short. I just want to address some of the flyers that have been put in the community. I just make a brief comment. It won't take long. Contrary to the false claims, by the way, I'm Ovi Papescu. Contrary to false claims, our family business for over 20 years is legally registered and is paying all of its taxes. My property taxes are currently paid, and I've been paying my property taxes for over 10 years as a homeowner. Contrary to one of the recent flyers, I have made positive constructive suggestions such as traffic congestion in our city. Addressing the many other false and outrageous claims in this campaign would be too time-consuming, so let me make one point crystal clear. My family has survived and stood up to communist persecution, and we will not be bullied or intimidated by a political machine that wants to overdevelop our town, our hills, and hurt our institutions. My family has been subjected to many harassing tactics, including an attempt to subpoena me for an unlawful deposition. Is this the price citizens must pay for standing up to developers and unreasonable landowners? These bully tactics will not succeed. I will continue my efforts to ensure that future growth concerns are addressed in a reasonable manner. This is in the best interest of the entire community. The people sending these flyers should not determine the future of Loma Linda. The citizens should determine the future of Loma Linda in a positive way by voting for Dr. Rigsby, Dr. Brower, and Mr. Papescu.
This is supposed to be non-political, sir.
Thank you and good night.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to respond to one point.
Okay.
Ovi, in one of your flyers, you made the comment that those of us who are attempting to save the hills are not attempting to save the hills, and as you know, that is not true. Thank you very much. No, that is exactly a matter of public policy which we have been voting on in the council.
Okay, okay, that's enough. Thank you, everybody. We will keep going. Conflict of interest, anybody that has a conflict of interest can declare so at this time. Item two, a presentation by Muscular Dystrophy Association. Is someone present for that organization?
Good evening. My name is Julie J. Rowe, and I am a program coordinator for the Muscular Dystrophy Association and the Southeast Los Angeles, Southeast Los Angeles, San Bernardino County chapter. And for those of you who don't know, the Loma Linda Fire Department participated in a Fill the Boot program, which is when our firefighters go out on the intersections and solicit motorists for donations. These donations go to support our local clinic, which is actually here at Loma Linda University Medical Center, as well as our summer camp program. All of our services and support is free to our families, and it is our second-largest fundraiser behind the Labor Day telethon. So the involvement that the firefighters have with the MDA is extremely important. The partnership with the IAFF has lasted since, or began in 1954. And this is the first year that they went out on the streets. They did a three-day Fill the Boot, and they did it on duty and off duty, and they did an absolutely amazing job. And I wanted to take this time to recognize their hard work and their dedication to the MDA, and they raised $21,535. So I'd like to present it to Mike Atchison at this time.
Thank you very much. I, I just want to, you know, on behalf of the fire department and the, the local, would like to thank the MDA for a chance to be a part of this, this year. It's our first year being a part of the MDA Fill the Boot, so we wanted to kick it off, you know, pretty big, and I think we, we definitely did. Like to thank Julie for all the work that she put in, and I'd like to thank all the guys that came in off duty and the guys that, that were on duty and took, it took a little bit of time between calls and, and helped out, out on the street. But more importantly, I think I would, I would like to attribute this to our citizens and the folks that came in and out of Loma Linda on the three days that, that we held it. They were the ones that made this, you know, so, so successful, and just thank, I'd like to thank them mostly. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, back to the previous item. An allegation was made here a few minutes ago that the city has been sued, and we refuse to defend ourselves, and we have to have a response to that. I mean, it's, it's, there was no response to that allegation. I'm not aware of the city being sued ever, and they refuse to defend themselves.
Rich?
I'm not aware of any such case where the city is involved with litigation. The city takes an active role in that. There are some cases where, due to indemnity provisions of entitlement approvals, the city is entitled to defense from those who are the applicants and holders of the entitlements. Sometimes the real party of interest may be a party other than the city, even though the city is named in the lawsuit. For instance, in the case where the referenda petitions were filed, the city did comply with the referenda, placed them on the ballot, and it was a, an outside lawsuit that put into question whether or not that should occur. So the city had complied with the referendum, and the city obviously has been involved with each of the lawsuits. In fact, the major lawsuit, the Holland lawsuit, as you know, the city took the very prominent lead role in defending that lawsuit and in upholding Measure V.
Thank you. Okay, we, we will now go to item three on the agenda, which is a joint public hearing of the city council and redevelopment agency. So Mr. Zepri, have you called the redevelopment agency to order?
It is called to order.
And Madam City Clerk, I guess this is your issue.
Yes, Mr. Mayor and Mr. Chairman, and members of the boards. This item pertains to the sale of three properties that the redevelopment agency currently owns. The one property is a house in the Parkside Development that the agency board purchased through legal action from the former owner. And the other two properties are infill projects where there had been homes that were demolished, and now we are placing manufactured homes on permanent foundations for the sale to income-qualified buyers. All three are income-qualified, and all three will, will have a long-term affordability covenant attached to it. And that term of the covenant is for 45 years by state law. The, the agency has modified its program somewhat in that in prior cases, we basically bought down the sales price of the home, and in this case, we are selling them at market value. The term of the loan has been designated as 45 years to run the same length of time as the covenant, and the interest rate is very low so that the monthly payment made by the new purchaser is affordable. The agency is acting as the lender, and there will also be an impound account to handle the taxes and insurance that will be paid for by the new purchaser. The new purchasers have signed the agreement. They have signed the disclosure statement, which basically addresses what I have already stated, and the rest will be handled through Stuart Title, which is our escrow company and our title company. So tonight, we are asking you to, to approve the resolutions which authorizes the agency to sell to the three prospective buyers. There's a city council, a resolution for each property, as well as an agency resolution. I'm available for questions.
Mr. Zepri, if it's okay with you, I'll just kind of.
Yes, please.
Go ahead and handle both sides of it here.
That'd be best.
This is a public hearing, so at this time, I'll open the public hearing. Does anyone wish to speak on item three on the agenda? Whether it's a council bill or a redevelopment agency bill. See, now I will close the public hearing. What's the pleasure of the council on Council Bill R. 2008-18?
Mr. Mayor, I'll go ahead and move Council Bill R. 2008-18.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Rigsby.
I'm planning to oppose these sales, not because the prospective homeowners should not have them, but because I just have some objections to the particular financial structuring of the deal. I think that these homeowners are, are an excellent addition to our community, and I think the sale will go forward. I just have some minor objections about the structuring, and that's it.
Brower?
I agree with some of those concerns. However, I think we need to look at that as a long-term issue, and these projects are so far along. I'd like to see us get these residents into these and the units taken care of, so I'd like to see staff bring back some other alternatives for future projects, but support doing these and completing them.
Okay. I presume your objections and statements apply to all of the items on this section. Is that correct?
I believe they do.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second on Council Bill R. 2008-18. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, no.
No.
The motion passes. CRA Bill R. 2008-06, is there a motion?
One second.
Motion, a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, no.
No.
Motion passes. Council Bill R. 2008-19.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Same people saying aye, I presume. Count, Redevelopment Agency Bill 2008-07.
Move it.
Second.
Motion by Peterson, second by Zipri. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, no.
No.
Okay, motion passes. Council Bill R. 2008-20.
Move it.
Motion?
Second.
And a second. In the opposition, we have one opposed. Motion passes. Council, I'm sorry, Redevelopment Agency Bill 2008-08.
2000.
It's aligned through it there.
No, it's a six.
It says 2006.
Is that a typo?
It's a typo.
It's a typo.
Assuming it's an eight.
So, that's-
Looking like a-
Council, Redevelopment Agency Bill 2008-08.
Move it.
Is there a motion?
I'll second.
And a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Oppose, no.
Mr. Mayor, let me address briefly, Councilmember-
But let me just declare the vote first.
Very good, yes.
And the motion does pass. Thank you. Go ahead.
In the role, Councilmember Riggsby and I form the executive committee of the Redevelopment Agency and what we will do is undertake with staff to take a look at some of the thoughts and suggestions. This is the way, and he and I have had a chance to talk a little bit with staff and with council and I appreciate his concerns. We have some long-range things that we want to talk about. This is, as we have heard from our staff, the way it has been done, I think some of us have had those conversations and it had been done along these lines for some time with some modifications. So, if it's okay with you folks, members of the agency board, we'll have probably an executive committee to discuss these, if that sounds good to you.
Yes, and with minor tweaking of the terms, I would have wholeheartedly supported these.
Right. We understand, we'll have a chance to talk and then bring some thoughts back. So, overall, we want to move these houses into the community and let people live in them, it's just we need to talk further.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, item four on the agenda, community development.
The presentation on this item will be made by our planning technician, Alan Hannah Florida.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. What do you have before you? It's Council Bill O. 2008-03. This is a zone change request and a request to approve precise plan of design, O. 7-03 and the associated certificate of appropriateness. Let me just go through a brief project summary. The project is located at 24404 University Avenue in an existing 1.12 acre site. The zone change is a request to change the zoning from R. 4 to R. 3. R. 4 does not permit apartment complexes. The R. 3, however, will ensure compliance with the development criteria specifically for multifamily projects. The request includes, a request to demolish an existing 2,500 square foot single-family residence. In its place, construct a 12-unit apartment complex. The project will provide two and three-bedroom units with approximately 1,100 to 1,200 square feet of living area. On-site amenities include a half-court basketball court, tot lots and a covered picnic area. You will see that shortly in the site plan. Just to give you an idea where the project's located, it's approximately 300 feet east of the existing Barton Road and University Avenue intersection. And this is the site layout illustrating the existing driveways, one servicing the Mobile Home Park, which is this, and the proposed driveway onto the site itself. This is University Avenue. And as you can see, the amenities are located here in the back. Perhaps next slide will illustrate the lot coverage and the proposed open space area a little bit better. These are the proposed structures. They're mirror buildings, six units each. As I said, these are the amenities, which will give you the, an idea of the lot coverage, which is approximately 23 percent, wherein R. 3, 60 percent is allowable. This is the floor plan for the project.
Can you back up and show the parking on that previous one, please?
Yes, sir. Parking will be in the back here and there will be garage parking for each of the units. So, this would be the guest parking, where in the back.
Thank you.
As I said, the floor plan illustrates the typical layout of the units. What you see here is an enlarged floor plan of the first floor, which will house the two-unit, two-bedroom units and the third floor, which will have the three-bedroom units. So, this will have approximately 1,100 square feet of living area and this would be 1,300 square feet. The elevations, the project has an eclectic architectural style. One of the comments from the Planning Commission meeting was that there was, they're recommending articulate, architectural articulation on the sides of the building. So, what the developer proposed was a wraparound stone veneer, as you can see here, as well as a trellis-type structure on the sides of the building. That will be consistent for the second building and as you see here, the wraparound section is, or stone veneer as we call it. This is a street view of the project looking north, northwest. This is a street perspective, which illustrates the site as you would see it from University Avenue. Staff's in support of the project. The architect and the developers worked very hard to provide us with the appropriate layout and architectural styles. We are, this concludes my presentation and we are available for any further questions. Thank you.
Any questions from council?
I just had a question on the zoning. You mentioned there used to be a single-family residence, I believe, on this lot, but yet it was a zone Mobile Home Park. Can you explain, at least on the surface, that discrepancy?
The existing single-family residence is older than 50 years old, which probably predates city incorporation. Might have been constructed, or it was constructed prior to incorporation, which would preclude the existing zoning of R. 4 right now.
If I might add, essentially, the single-family residence was legal non-conforming.
Any other questions?
I have a question. Does this location potentially interfere with the future plans that we've been given of extending a road along the canal?
Jake?
From Redlands Boulevard, past the academy, up to Barton Road?
You're speaking of the future alignment of what's referred to as the West Road. The southwesterly corner of the site could possibly impede its route. But, given the fact that we don't have any formal project or plans for the West Road, this project is able to go forward.
Probably be helpful for the public looking on to know where the city boundary is on that map. Does somebody have a pointer, could just point out where the city boundary is?
The Gage Canal, I believe, which is-
Along the edge of the-
Yeah, along the edge, right here.
Along that road.
The city boundary, okay.
Well, I looked at this earlier. I don't see how any proposed overcrossing would come, I mean, it would come near, but it would impact it at all, directly impact it.
I think it depends on how that roadway is aligned and at this point, we don't have a firm alignment for it, so it could affect it, but we don't have a formal alignment. So, I have to say at this point, it's not a project, but this is, and so they're here first.
Okay.
Perhaps the Public Works Director would like to add something to that?
You are correct. Right now, we're just lying on a piece of paper, that's all I have with regard to the West Road.
Thank you. Any other questions from council? Okay, this is also a public hearing. I will open the public hearing at this time. Anyone from the public wish to speak to this issue? Please come forward.
Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council, my name is Gary Miller with GMID Architects and Associates, Redlands, California, 1177 Idaho, Redlands, California, where the architects for the applicant. I just wanted to say that we have read the city staff report. The city staff report recommends that we not implement two recommendations by the Historic Commission, that being the keeping the existing home on the property and converting it to a, to a community center. That would virtually wipe out any possibility of development for this property in any practical sense. We also agree that the two-story option is a more desirable option. It enables us to move the units further away from the adjacent, from the adjacent Mobile Home Park, allowing us to have a lot of open space. I believe we exceed the city required open space by a large margin, over 20 percent. Finally, just wanted to point out that we do consider this to be a high-quality residential development in an area that is what I would describe as infill. It puts additional housing units in an area that has very little impact to the city. We're not developing on the fringes of the city and provides housing near where it could be used. We know the university has needs for additional housing and this helps fill that need. So, we are available for any questions, should you have any.
Well, I don't understand your first comment because that wasn't the final recommendation. So, it seemed like you were arguing against a comment that had already been discarded.
No, I am agreeing with staff's recommendation to not include the recommendation three and four by the Historical Commission.
Thank you.
That was my intent.
Any questions? Thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak to this issue? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. What's the pleasure of the council?
I move the adopted mitigate, adopt the mitigated negative declaration. How much of this can we do in one motion, by the way?
I would think we can do it all in one motion, but I'll ask our city attorney.
Yes, you may.
Okay, I move everything. The negative declaration, Council Bill O. 2008-3, the certificate appropriateness and the precise plan of design.
Is there a second?
I'll second and if I could comment, it's hard to get excited about an apartment project. It doesn't bring warm, fuzzy feelings to my heart, but I do think this particular location, that's Mobile Home Park zoning and is within walking distance of the university, I think it's a reasonable project for that location.
Any further comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, no. Passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay, item five. It looks like an extension is being requested. Shall I go ahead and open the public hearing? Mr. City Attorney?
That was noticed as a public hearing.
Okay, I will open the public hearing for item five. Does anyone wish to speak to this issue? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. And the request is?
Extension of time.
Yeah, Mayor Chrisman, if I may, it is a one-year extension of time request by the applicant Corporation for Better Housing for an eight-acre site on Papa Street, just south of the San Antonio Creek. This was previously approved in 2006. It's a three-phase project. The applicant is still the same. With the request by the applicant Corporation for Better Housing, the scope of the project will not change. The applicant is focusing on development of the apartment building at the present time. This is a rendering of the previously approved project from two years ago. Staff is available for any comments. The staff report has been provided to you. In addition, we took the request to the Planning Commission last month and the original reports and conditions of approval and mitigated negative declaration from two years ago are provided to the City Council as well.
Is there a motion to continue this? I'm going to second.
In addition to the recommendation, we would like to add some additional language. I could address the council now or if the council would like to discuss our-
Mr. Mayor, there may be a confusion on this. It's not actually here tonight with a request for a continuance. It is an extension of the existing approval. So, we are not continuing it. That was perhaps unclear.
Okay.
And that's why it was as a public hearing again. But there was some additional language that, on the movie, the motion, that would clarify the fact that as part of the approval, staff is recommending that the apartment portion go forward separately and so some of the conditions of approval will be enforced as to that portion of the project that will proceed as a phase, but staff can explain that further.
Thank you. The additional language that is recommended to the City Council this evening is part of the additional, as part of the original recommendation in the staff report is as follows. Based on the original findings and subject to the conditions of approval as amended herein, also, this approval includes authorization to construct a 44-unit apartment project as a separate phase, subject to those conditions of approval as applicable thereto.
Thank you. Now, are we ready?
Second again.
We have a motion by Peterson, second by Zipri. Any further discussion? Any opposition? So ordered. Thank you. Now, I presume the motion included his suggested wording?
Yes, I'm seconded.
That was correct. Everybody understood that, okay. Okay, caught a few people in the audience now and I presume they're here for this issue, which is Council Bill O. 2008-01 pertaining to regulating of secondhand smoke. City Attorney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you know, this ordinance was drafted based upon some input from some other cities that had similar experiences and similar concerns. So, some of it incorporates provisions of our existing smoking ordinance. Other portions are somewhat new or entirely new. We've made a few minor typographical corrections. Councilman Peterson and I have discussed a few provisions and there may be a few additional minor recommendations for changes. The main issue for a policy decision would be the provision as to any private enforcement. That language is intended to allow persons affected by smoking to have some remedy by way of a small claims-type action that would not require direct city involvement or code enforcement efforts. The private enforcement would not allow individual citizens to issue citations or anything of that nature, but it would give them some small remedy with the small claims court in a situation that were personally offensive to them, but didn't rise to the level of a code enforcement matter that the city wanted to get in the middle of. a code enforcement matter that the city wanted to get in the middle of. So with that, again, this is here for your discussion, and any additional comments or recommendations, we could make those changes as you see fit. The additional, I think the copy that's in front of you that made it to the staff report includes most of the prior minor changes. On page six, under section 8.10.030, and under subpart P, "Public Place," it was recommended that we include in the definition of "public place" after buses, the following language, quote, "and public transportation and transit stops." The following.
Actually, at that point, I think the word taxi and bus could be, because that is public transportation. Is that not correct? That could be taken out and just simply replaced by public transportation and transit stops?
Well, I think that we wanted to include the actual taxis and buses, so that smoking would not be permitted onboard the bus. The stops then would be the.
No, but if you remove the word taxi and bus and replace it with public transportation, doesn't that solve the problem?
Taxis are not public transportation. They're privately hired transportation.
But they're available to the public.
Well, I see what you're saying, and when you and I had discussed this, I thought you were referring to public transportation as a type of stop. So I read that.
Oh, no, no, no.
Public transportation and transit stops.
Stops, yes.
So we might reword it in light of your concern as taxis, buses, other forms of public transportation, and transit stops. That would cover everything.
A question, let's say a taxi driver wanted to haul people who smoked. This would forbid that?
Yes, it would.
And I guess the question, you know, obviously, I'm not a smoker, and not too many people in this town are. I'm just trying to think of a way to not go so far that one is impinging on maybe the rights of someone who wants to offer that. Maybe one taxi cab in the whole town wants to handle all the smoker business.
Would you say the same thing about bars or restaurants?
Well, my understanding is state law currently outlaw smoking in workplaces, and I would think that would include a taxi cab. I think it's already forbidden under state law.
Maybe it is.
I'm not sure.
But, well, buses are public.
But taxis are public.
Well, if it's already outlawed, then we don't need to put it here, do we? It's already against the law.
Well, there is some degree of redundancy in this ordinance, yes.
I mean, if we're, you know, if we're passing something that's already against the law, then we're just restating what already is.
Just in case the state lightens up?
What, to answer that?
Yes, our ordinance would not supersede, obviously, anything that is currently in state law, but it reinforces it and makes it clear for our residents what our standards are here.
I've got a couple of comments, and I did talk to Mr. Peterson earlier today on I think we can all concur that smoking isn't good, but as I have indicated earlier, if a law isn't enforceable, it's really not much of a law. And the idea that we're going to limit smoking in someone's own residence, whether it's a rental unit or their own residence, whether it's a multi-unit residence or a single-house resident, for us to pass laws saying what landlords can or can't do with their own private property, or what people can or can't do inside of their own house or rental unit or apartment, that's just starting to be too much government for me. Now, I'm sure there's other things that happen inside of people's residences that we might not approve of also, and I'm not sure how in the world we would ever enforce that. So I'm bothered by that section of it. And then the other part is.
Mr. Mayor, have you ever lived in an apartment next door to somebody who smokes in the apartment next to you?
I probably have. It's been years since I've lived in an apartment, so that hasn't been an issue for me, and maybe I'd feel differently if that were the case. Nonetheless, I don't know how we would enforce it.
Mr. Mayor, we have a law in town, on the books, that says that you cannot discharge water from private property into the city street, which means technically speaking, you can't wash your car near driveway. However, I don't believe anybody's ever gotten a ticket for washing their car in their driveway. There's got to be some common sense.
Well, that's a good point.
We haven't, you can't have weeds in your lawn, but we haven't, you ever given a ticket? We don't have cops going around with magnifying glasses looking for weeds in people's lawns either.
We have a law like that?
You have to keep up your property, and you have to destroy the weeds, yeah.
Okay.
There's a number of laws like that, and the point of it is, in many cases, with current laws on the books, the reason they're there is in case we need them. For example, if you decide to empty your swimming pool into the city street three times every week, you would probably have the code enforcement officer coming around to visit you. But you don't do that every week. Maybe you wash your car, nobody bothers you. There's got to be some common sense applied to any law.
That can also lead to selective enforcement, however. So balance that out, and I know we just dealt with the issue of the private enforcement, and, you know, I would weaken that even more so than you indicated. Too much junk ends up in small claims court anyway. I don't want to make it any easier to clog up those courtrooms with something we passed here. There's got to be other ways to deal with things in this way.
Well, my question is, what would change if section 810100 was simply removed? What in reality would change? What could people do if this is there that they couldn't do if it was taken out? I mean, you can go to court anyway, can't you?
You probably can.
I've heard it stated many times, your only cost is $80 to file a lawsuit, so.
Well, actually, now to go to Superior Court, it's about $300.
Okay.
But, yes, it is true that anybody could still file an action in the Superior Court for some sort of injunctive relief. The small claims action is something, obviously, that would be easier for somebody to do and less expensive, would not require an attorney.
Well, if this section was taken out, would they not have access to the small claims court? And if it's in, they do have, is that what changes it?
Well, small claims courts do not have jurisdiction to issue injunctive relief. They can issue a small compensatory judgment, but they cannot order compliance.
So if this is left in, that doesn't change the situation, does it?
Well, no, not directly on that point, but it gives them a specific cause of action rather than just the general sort of relief. It gives actually the opportunity for a specific claim.
You know, one question on that, if you're going to small claims court, there's a little section in here that talks about attorney's fees, and those of us who go to court know you can't take an attorney to small claims.
Correct.
Except on the appeal part. What do we do about that? Or is that, am I misreading it?
The, some of this language would have to do with small claims and other portions would not. Obviously, the attorney's fee portion, if there were a serious enough situation that somebody wanted to go to Superior Court, then yes, there is that potential for attorney's fees here.
But obviously, a judge, you know, people can be sanctioned if they go to, well, they have to be careful when they start filing in Superior Court. In a small claims case, you should not be filing in Superior Court, but this suggests somebody might.
You're getting too legal on us, Mr. Zipper.
This is a law.
As I said.
There's some rules here that you've got to be aware of.
Yes, this does give more options to an offended or harmed individual that you may or may not want to include. As I said, this is kind of the latest, greatest draft that's, other cities have adopted as kind of a model ordinance, so I have no personal pride of authorship in that particular section or most of it.
So other cities have put those attorney's fees clauses in there?
Yes.
Okay.
Stan, any comments?
I was going to wait till we hear from public comments. Still waiting to make up my mind on this. I know people think all of us have our opinions and our minds made up on things, but I can honestly say I haven't decided how I'm going to vote on this.
I'd like to hear the public opinions, too. It's going to be a nice discussion, from what I can foresee. Just my comment initially is that I wouldn't support the private enforcement section at all, in any form. I would like to see it stricken.
Dusty, I think you and I agree on that issue.
Good for you. Good for me.
I will go ahead and open the public hearing. Does anyone wish to speak to this issue? And actually, I know that already, so let me go ahead and bring out the list of people that wish to speak. Thomas Grant.
Mr. Mayor, Thomas Grant left a phone message, and that was his, his message was that he supported the ordinance.
Okay, thank you.
How are you guys doing? As a resident of Loma Linda and as a student of the Public Health Department, I support this ordinance. As you are aware, secondhand smoke is a leading, secondhand smoke exposure is a third-leading cause of premature death. It kills over 52,000 non-smokers every year. That is according to the Center of Disease Prevention and Control. In addition to that, illnesses related to secondhand exposure range from lower respiratory problems, pneumonia, bronchitis, sudden infant death syndrome, and it's according to the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services, over 300,000 children are affected with this annually. Secondhand smoke exposure is proven to be a nuisance, harmful, and is deadly. It is put in the same category as toxins as benzene and asbestos, and this is according to the California Air Resource Board. Now, I know there was questions regarding, would you want to live next to a secondhand smoker? I wouldn't, because secondhand smoke drifts, and when it drifts, as a non-smoker, I'm supposed to do all the toxins and smoke. We know that there's over 4,000 chemicals in just one cigarette. When that cigarette is burning, those 4,000 chemicals go into the air and produce toxins. So according to the Surgeon General, there is no safe level of secondhand smoke exposure. Local cities throughout the nation, and particularly California, are leading the way in passing ordinances such as this, eliminating smoking and smoke, secondhand smoke exposure to the residents. I encourage Loma Linda to do the same. In addition to being a resident here and enjoying this beautiful city, I am committed to public health, and public health is committed to making a healthier community. So I encourage you all, I know that there are some undecideds, to really consider this, that secondhand smoke exposure is a toxin and is deadly. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Eileen Tarrick?
Good evening, mayors, mayor and members of the City Council. As a student of the university here and a Loma Linda resident, I want to commend the city for its tremendous efforts in proposing to further protect the health of its residents. I study tobacco and its effects, and I know that it only destroys health and lives for those that choose to use it and those that choose not to. Coming from a background that emphasizes prevention, I know that some might not appreciate or understand the magnitude at which the smoke-free ordinance, if passed, will benefit our city, everyone who lives in it and beyond. However, I just wanted to express my support for healthy quality of life for everyone, and to say that I am very honored to be associated with a city that considers overcoming the many challenges that may come with making the well-being of its citizens an important priority. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, just one quick statement. I am a faculty member in the School of Public Health at Loma Linda, but I did not solicit this input from these two people, so that's.
Are these your students, Floyd?
No.
Yeah.
Well.
That would be, well, I won't go there. Jeffrey Sunentang, welcome.
All right. I am Jeff Sunentang, and you probably can see my name if you look for it in the search on the Internet. I first found out about this a couple of months ago, when Mr. Peterson was mentioned in the newspaper, and he knows pretty well.
Can you come a little closer to the mic, please?
Yes. I first found out about this a couple of months ago in the newspaper, and Mr. Peterson knows full well what I think of it and most of the reasons. And a lot of it, and really, the major majority of it, really has to do with the principle of the matter, and it's really, he went to the same Sabbath school with me, with Dr. Maxwell, and he knows full well what Dr. Maxwell talked about as the way God runs his universe and the principles that he uses, and the use that he makes of law, and when God uses law as an extreme measure when things are really, really bad. That's a very important principle to me. And when you go around making laws where, when there's absolutely no huge problem to begin with, there's not a major smoking problem in Loma Linda, can anyone point out where there is a huge smoking problem in Loma Linda? You mentioned previously that you asked if Mr. Christman had lived in an apartment beside a smoker. Well, I have, and I wasn't right here recently, but when I was up in Cook, Washington, my neighbor smoked. Well, I can deal with that, because I can handle it. It's not going to kill me to just let somebody do what they feel that they need to do, and it wasn't always tobacco smoke, there's smoking either. Okay? And now, where I am over here on 24186 Barton Road, is right on the border of the end of Loma Linda, and it's right on the edge over by the canal, and I was interested to see that they want to put a road through there. I guess it would take out our house, but anyway, because since we're right beside the canal. But lots of times, there's apartments across the canal there, and people are out there, they're smoking, and it's not always tobacco smoke either, and it's fine with me, it doesn't matter. It's fresh air out there. If you don't want to be right beside it, it's a few hundred feet away, walk away. Okay. Now, some of these people here from the Public Health Department, I appreciate they have an opinion, but what they have said is pure and simple collectivism. Now, in case people don't know what collectivism is, I'll just read the definition here. The political principle of centralized social and economic control. Notice the social part, centralized social control. Now, I don't like collectivism, but I realize that's a very prominent part of the United States government at this point in time, but collectivism is not something to be aspired to. Collectivism has centralized control. Centralized control is not a positive thing in the long run. It may seem to streamline things and make things more efficient in the short term, but as a long-term policy, it's not, doesn't have positive effects. And as an example of that, I'd like to just point out this nice little article I found in City Journal from, let's see, spring of 2005, it's called "The Road to Surfdom." I would highly recommend that, and I don't know if I can put this where all the council members can read it if they want and see copies, but if it's possible, I'll bring it up and you can look at it, but I would highly recommend that everybody actually read this, and it's simply on the Internet, you don't have to pay anything to get it, it's from the City Journal, spring 2005, "The Road to Surfdom" by Theodore Doll Ripple. It's from the City Journal, spring 2005, "The Road to Surfdom" by Theodore Doll Ripple. Now, it's very interesting reading. And just the final thing I would just like to mention, who you might be in association with in passing this nice ordinance. I just did a nice little search here, and what do I find? It says, "This is from Australia entitled 'Smoking Ban: Fitness Tests for a Healthier Nation.'" Smoking would be... This is from Saturday, April 19, 2008. Smoking would be banned for everyone born next year, junk food would be taxed, and everyone would be subjected to a fitness test by 2020. By comparison, the cost of healthy food, including fruits and vegetables, would be reduced to reflect its low environmental impact and obvious health benefits. These are just a few of the ideas from 100 of the nation's health experts who discussed the best way to combat obesity, reduce illness, and promote a healthy lifestyle. Health Minister Nicola Roxon said one idea put forth in a submission was an annual national fitness test where citizens would receive a financial incentive if they passed. Health stream participants in the 2020 summit also discussed increasing public education about how death can be a positive experience to avoid patients panicking when they reach hospital emergency departments. Health participant Meredith Scheel, a former Westmead Children's Hospital pediatrician, said these many participants have suggested a ban on cigarette sales by 2020. A lot of health submissions suggested a ban on smoking by 2020, she said. Just to make sure that this wasn't something from The Onion or something, I looked it up on the original, and yes, it's there at news.com.au indicating Australia. So it's not limited to the United States of America or California or Loma Linda. There's a worldwide push toward collectivism, and it's not a good thing. In case you want to look it up, it's, once again, it's just news.com.au, "A Smoking Ban: Fitness Tests for a Healthier Nation." I think that's about all I care to say at the moment.
Thank you for your comments.
I just wanted to respond. I actually have read the book, "The Road to Surfdom." It is challenging, has a lot of interesting ideas, and surprised anyone else that actually read it.
I've started reading it.
I've been to all these meetings as we've been leading up to this vote on this smoking ordinance, and there were some continuations and whatnot, so... And I'm a busy guy, but I'll do my best here.
And you've gotten a lot of other education on council meetings.
Yeah, some of it I could live without, but thank you, Mayor, and I appreciate you all that you speak.
Some of it we could live without, too.
Yeah, I bet. I bet. The Helena Montana study, if you want to call it that, was talked about up here by one of the doctors, I believe it was back in the March meeting. She was talking about the 60% drop in the heart attack rate in Helena, Montana. Now, this meeting's running late tonight, so I'll go fast. The bottom line is, we're talking about a heart attack rate that went from seven a month to four. So there's zero science there. And the bottom line is, I'm not saying smoking is a great and wonderful habit, neither is drinking, and neither is eating donuts on two regular bases, but the bottom line is, there is not one single death certificate in the United States of America that says that dude died from secondhand smoke. It doesn't exist. It's never happened. So, you know, and what got lost a little bit here and a couple of people talking right now is, is that this smoking ban with the private enforcers, which needs to get fixed, is mostly dealing with outdoor smoke. I've read the ordinance, I have a copy of it, I've gone over it exhaustively. The bottom line is, you know, you're telling me if I come in as a guest to my friend's apartment here in Loma Linda, I politely go outside to smoke on their patio, and it is actually in the ordinance that I could be breaking the law? And somebody can have a video camera recording that I'm doing it right there and go seek civil redress through the, in my opinion, not very well-written private enforcer part of this ordinance? So we're not smoking in the denny's anymore, guys. We're not smoking in the bars anymore. I don't agree with that necessarily, but I certainly don't agree with the patios that were built in Santa Monica for smokers off of restaurants and bars. It's illegal now to smoke on those patios. They were built for smokers outside. So the fact that I could be walking to the State of Brothers parking lot over here and be smoking and can actually have to deal with, you know, some knucklehead citizen coming over and snapping my pitcher and snapping my license plate and then bringing it into the city, and I'm, you know, having to deal with all this, that's sheer nonsense. We've gone far enough with the smoking thing. It doesn't need to go outside.
Thank you, sir. Pam Scully.
Good evening.
Hello. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm not an advocate of smoking, but I am an advocate of choice, a choice of landlords to provide non-smoking or smoking apartments and the right of a tenant to choose whether they're going to smoke or not smoke in their home. So I've got very strongly opposed to the effects on this ordinance in multifamily housing, in rental property, and government intervention in what somebody can or cannot do within their home. From purely a business standpoint, economic standpoint, I'd like to use our property as an example of how detrimental it could be economically to us to run a business in Loma Linda. Loma Linda Springs is 444 units. It's already restricted by age, 55 and older, so we already have a very restrictive market. Right now, we have a 15% vacancy. There's not enough population, really, to maintain a higher occupancy right now. Based on what I read this evening, 80% of those apartments would be non-smoking apartments, leaving only 89 units available for our smoking tenants. The senior population unfortunately has a higher percentage of smokers than even younger demographics. Using this as an example, 80% of 444 units would be 355 units that would have to be held aside for non-smoking households. Let's say 50 of those apartments, which is very conservative, we could not fill because there might not be enough non-smoking people or residents. That alone, holding those 50 off, would cost us over $700,000 a year and bring our occupancy probably down to 75%. So economically, it could be devastating, and this is very conservative speaking. So my opposition is very strong on how it impacts tenants, landlords, private property rights, and I think it's too much government intervention, and I think people should have choices.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question. Do you have...
[inaudible]
Yeah, I have a question. Do you have any estimate of the percentage of seniors that smoke that you could...
Well, I would say Loma Linda is probably less than our other locations in the senior, but we've had the property, we bought the property in 1989, I've been with the property since. I've not had any complaints at Loma Linda of secondhand smoke, so I don't know if 30% of the population there or 40%. We've thought from time to time to voluntarily actually designate one building and see how that worked economically and see if there was a demand among our tenants to have a non-smoking building. And I think that's something that a landlord should have... It should be voluntary, it should not be mandated, and we don't know. But we're thinking of experimenting, taking one building, which might be 32 units, and designate that building as a non-smoking building, you know? But to mandate, and I saw July of 2008, we'd have to start sending notices out to our tenants? I don't know. But to mandate it, I just think that's way too much government intervention. So... But what I'm going to do is send a survey out. We send surveys out to our residents on a regular, you know, about every two years just to kind of evaluate how we're doing and to see what their needs are if we're meeting their needs. And so I'm going to definitely include the smoking issue in the survey to see how many people are actually smokers on the property.
You haven't had any complaints about secondhand smoke? Have you had any requests from people who are asking for you to set up a smoke-free premises?
Not that I'm aware of. I'm not aware of that.
Okay.
But I will have more information. And this is a public hearing, I wasn't even aware of it. I don't know if you sent notices out to businesses in Loma Linda about the public hearing, or... And we're one of the bigger businesses, and it really impacts us, so I was kind of surprised that we weren't notified.
Thank you.
Thank you.
But if you'd like information after the survey, I'd be happy to share it.
Donna Newton.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and city council members. My name is Donna Newton, and I'm the director for In the Zone Tobacco-Free Project, and we work in Riverside and San Bernardino County. I had a list of notes, but after hearing all the other speakers, I'm going to talk totally about something else. First of all, I'd like to remind everybody that over 80% of Californians do not smoke. So the other issue I'd like to address is what the mayor said about smoke-free multiple-unit housings. We're not talking about taking away rights from smokers, we're talking about giving rights to tenants who want to live smoke-free, but because they can't or don't own their own house and they're renters, they want designated smoke-free apartments. After somebody has lived in an apartment who's a smoker, I don't know if you've ever been in there, but it's highly toxic, and it costs a lot of money to clean it up to get it ready for the next tenant. So my case is, it's not about taking away rights from smokers, we're still going to have them smoke, but let's give some rights to the people who want their families to be smoke-free and not punish them because they can't buy their own home. I've been working on multi-unit smoke-free zones for the last three years, and I listened to the lady about the economical part, but I was also one of those advocates that was out spending her evenings in bars, which isn't something I like to tell my family and friends, when we were doing smoke-free bars. And all the bar owners were crying the same song, "Oh, we're gonna lose money, we're not gonna have any customers, we're gonna have to close," and that just simply didn't happen because a whole new population started going to bars. Now, I don't know if that's a good thing or a bad thing, but they didn't lose money. I even had one restaurant that was a sports bar, and it was kind of a rowdy sports bar, but after the smoke-free bars went into effect, it became a family smoke-free sports bar. And their business grew so much that they had to enlarge their kitchen. So my hope is that families living in multi-unit housing can go in and say, "I want a smoke-free unit for my family." And I can tell you, over the last two and a half years that I've been doing surveys, people want smoke-free apartments. They're asking for them. I worked with an apartment in San Bernardino, she went smoke-free in 88 units, and it worked because people want it. I was also gonna address the issue of your enforcement things about what, you know, self-enforcers and private enforcers, and working with a lot of different smoke-free areas. I've worked on smoke-free parks, I've worked on smoke-free raceways and stadiums. Many of us have Kaiser Insurance, and we all know, once we hit that driveway, nobody's gonna be smoking. But here's an example about how important good signage is. The Kaiser facility that's in Corona, they're undergoing some remodeling, and they've taken down all the signs that they had in their parking lot because they're digging the parking lots up, and they have one small sign at one door as you go in. And guess what's happening now in their parking lot? People are smoking. People may smoke at one in Riverside and Kaiser, but self-enforcement comes up. I've walked across Kaiser many times and seen people smoking and gone, "Excuse me, this is a smoke-free campus, you need to put the smoke out," and they do it. And that's what the education is about. So I'd be really sad to see anything change when it came to smoke-free multi-unit housing because it's not, again, about taking away rights from smokers, it's about giving rights to families that want to live smoke-free. Thank you.
Thank you. I also have a letter here from California Clean Air Project, which we can put part into the record, by Narender Deloue, or something like that. Is that person here? Okay. I'll go ahead and make my comment as far as the rental issue. Did you want to speak also? Okay. I guess if somebody rents an apartment and there's smoke or residue there after they move out, that's what deposits are for, is to pay for part of the cleanup. I'm just still concerned about the enforceability of somebody enforcing something that happens inside of their home, whether it's a rental unit or they own it themselves. Wanted to take your comment and ask the last of the cards I have, and then I'll close the public hearing. Go ahead, Mike.
Mike Christiansen. Mr. Mayor, city council, this is a constitutional issue that a group of gentlemen laid their lives on the line when they signed a document called the Declaration of Independence that had the words "life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness" in it. They weren't talking about whether or not they could regulate each other's lives, they were talking about the very slow erosion of their rights by a onerous government. I've heard more, I've been coming to city hall meetings for over eight years, I have heard more complaints about train whistles and horns, and I'm sure that the bars that had to close, that had to regulate their, or make them non-smoking bars, sold just as much alcohol and/or probably more and contributed to as many or more alcohol-related accidents and deaths than tobacco. A Dallas police officer decided that he would take on the issue of what percentage of all crime was alcohol-related. He was stunned to find that it was above 68% of all crime was alcohol-related. All crime. Okay, we're not talking about that here, let's just go on. We're talking about harmful particulates in the air, are we not? When we get right down to where the rubber hits the road, it's harmful particulates in the air. So when we have the Burlington Northern Santa Fe park their trains behind the VA Hospital and idle all night and have over 20 trains a day going up the tracks spewing diesel, which is now becoming known as an incredible producer of harmful particulates, we're going to have to, along with this ordinance, notify Burlington Northern Santa Fe that they're going to have to reroute through Marino Valley because the prevailing winds are from the northwest to the southeast. We're also gonna have to notify Caltrans and the Department of Transportation that I-10 is also going to have to be rerouted through... I'm sorry, I'm getting to the ridiculous...
You are. Let's bring it back.
I mean, this is how ridiculous this is getting. This is all about harmful particulates, okay? And I'm just taking it to its complete illogical conclusion. You're taking something that is not a problem and you're saying, "Let's over-enforce it." But if you... that is not a problem, and you're saying, "Let's over-enforce it." But if you over-enforce it, you're gonna have to take it right to its illogical, ridiculous, humorous conclusion that, you know, try to corral the Santa Ana winds, okay? So, I've made enough noise.
Thank you, sir. One more person, please. Hello, welcome.
Greetings, Council. My name's Janine Goffe. You probably remember me. I'm a nurse.
You're the bamboo lady.
Yeah, the bamboo lady.
Is somebody smoking bamboo?
And it's gonna be ironic, probably, in some of your minds that I'm speaking here tonight the way I will, but I am a nurse at the Medical Center, and I see patients come through our department, which is post-surgical, many times with morbidity and mortality of smoking cigarettes over a long period of time in their lives. And I hate cigarettes, I hate tobacco, I hate the tobacco companies. I hate the dishonesty of their research over the years. But I am here tonight to ask you to vote against this bill, because I think it just goes too far. I just feel, and I don't have notes up here, I wasn't even planning to speak. I just feel like tobacco, smoke out-of-doors is probably not that big of a deal. People can move away, people can ask others to move away, people can exercise communication skills with the person standing next to them and say, "You know, that smoke's bothering me, and I really need to wait for this bus. Do you think you could move a few feet away?" I don't know too many people who wouldn't do that. I have a friend who's ninety-seven years old, and she has a caregiver who lives with her, who's a relative. He's a chain smoker, and he's staying with her and taking care of her really out of the goodness of his heart. And if he couldn't get out of that little apartment, little duplex there several times a day to smoke a cigarette on the sidewalk, he wouldn't be able to take care of Ruth. And my friend would be in a nursing home. Sometimes, passing laws that are kind to some actually turn out to be cruel to other people. And I just feel like... I haven't heard here tonight of one single study that actually isolates the problem of second-hand smoke out-of-doors in terms of morbidity and mortality. I bet you none exist. I don't even think anybody would be bothered trying to do it. I have a friend who has a little bit of emphysema because of years of living with a father who smoked indoors with her. And when I told her about this, she's also a nurse where I work, and when I told her about this bill, she just looked at me and she said, "You're kidding? Why would they pass a bill banning people to walk on a sidewalk and smoke?" It just seemed kind of crazy to her. And she actually suffers from the results of, she's quite sure, of indoor second-hand smoke over many years. So, that's just what I wanted to say, and thank you for giving me the time.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak? Please come forward.
Good evening. My name is Michelle Jacknick. I'm the Program Manager for the Tobacco Use Reduction Now program with the San Bernardino County Department of Public Health. And I just wanted to comment on some of the things that have been said tonight. The Environmental Protection Agency has declared second-hand smoke to be a cancer-causing agent. And in 2006, the U.S. Surgeon General stated that second-hand smoke exposure causes disease and premature death in non-smokers, and maintained there is no risk-free level of exposure to second-hand smoke. So, it is clearly declared to be a problem. At the Public Health Department, we receive a number of complaints from the public, generally, not only from your city, but around the county, particularly from people who rent apartments. And often, they do complain about the fact that they are being exposed to second-hand smoke that circulates through the vent systems, and they have no recourse. They can't move, there's nothing they can do, they're kind of a prisoner in their own home. Sometimes, these are elderly people. They may already have health conditions that put them at risk, and so they're very concerned about the problem, and there's really nothing they can do. They call us, asking if there's something we can do to help them. And at this point, there isn't. What we recommend is that they talk with their apartment owner, manager, try to discuss whether they can establish a smoke-free unit, just as was suggested. But one of the things that we find when we do talk to the owners is a reluctance, and this came up with the bar owners as well, and restaurant owners, to have what would be considered a level playing field. No one really wants to be the first one to try to have a smoke-free apartment complex or buildings designated. They're afraid of what would occur if they did that, and maybe their tenants would go off to the place down the street, or the place in the next town, and those kinds of things. And that was the reason why the state laws came about, to make it equal for all people who are business owners to have a smoke-free work environment, for example, that we now all enjoy. I do believe, and the state has shown through evidence of what other cities have done, that these types of policies are self-enforcing. Education is the tool that can be used to help people in the community learn what's required. And people do take it upon themselves to typically abide. As was pointed out earlier, there are a number of laws that aren't particularly directly enforced, but people do follow good common sense, as was also said. I think second-hand smoke, clearly by the Center for Disease Control, has been identified as the most preventable cause of death. We do have lots of risk factors, obesity, and the lack of exercise and other things. But this is something we can clearly help in a very concrete way through a policy like this. It creates a model as a healthy city. It shows families, and children in particular, that this is the norm in the community, that smoking is not what young people should be doing anyway as they're growing up. So, our office remains a resource to continue to assist the city in any effort that you do undertake, and we can definitely support your education efforts in the community.
You're hearing the tension between allowing freedom for people who want to smoke, and the other side, which is saying, you know, "We don't want anybody to be exposed to second-hand smoke." If you had your way, would you have the city simply just outlaw smoking?
We are not here to tell a smoker that they shouldn't smoke, but we do feel that it's important to protect the rights of the non-smokers.
Is there any place where smoking should be allowed?
Designated areas can be prescribed by the city, so that you can, as a private owner, have a place for smokers to...
Anywhere outdoors left?
Designated areas may be provided, as long as they would be at least twenty feet from an entryway or an operable window, which would also be in compliance with the new state law, AB 846.
Because, have you heard a lot of complaints from Loma Linda from people saying, "We have..." I haven't noticed much second-hand smoke in the city, to be honest. You know, I used to run into it in some conventions I was at, and I'd go to law meetings, and people would be smoking. But over the last ten years, I just don't notice it anymore. And I'm trying to think of a time when I'm affected in the town here by it. Have you heard much in the way of complaints in our town?
You know, we haven't received complaints particularly from Loma Linda, but perhaps you're not recognizing it as frequently, because now it isn't normal in a place of business or in a restaurant or bar to smoke. It's becoming much more common to see smoke-free areas. So, this type of ordinance is just moving forward, the process, to create more smoke-free environments.
I've had some smokers talk to me, worried that there's no place left for them to smoke. And they've said, "You know, we're not trying to cause anybody else to have to endure our cigarette smoke, but we're worried that it keeps tightening more and more where, you know, there isn't..." If you're not noticing it, I said frankly, "I'm not noticing it." They said, "Is there gonna be any place left for us to smoke?" And I'm just trying to figure out that balance, because it seems... I'm not a smoker, I've never smoked in my life. It's just, I'm not noticing it as a problem anymore. And I'm trying to think, where do you stop? Is there really not a problem? Then are we gonna go ahead and say, "Well, we've gotta clamp down on the remaining few places that are left for smokers?" Because I've had several come to me and say, "We're getting concerned where this is gonna stop."
Your ordinance, as it reads now, doesn't preclude a private property owner from designating, or the city from designating, a smoke-free area, as I understand. So, it doesn't outlaw smoke in the city.
There's a... But there's an eighty percent... I'm trying to understand how this would work, because there's an eighty percent rule. And if you heard the Loma Linda Springs talk, they're concerned. I understand there's a grandfather provision, from the way I've read it, but it does start to cramp down. So, I'm just trying to get a feel where you think... And I'll stop, let somebody else ask a question.
I'm trying to close the public hearing, too. Thank you.
I understand.
Thank you.
Does anyone else wish to speak? Saying now I'm gonna close the public hearing. It's the pleasure of the council.
Are we gonna handle this in a markup fashion, where we strike odious provisions one at a time, or is it gonna be some omnibus motion, and whoever gets the motion in first gets the amendments they want, and everyone else has to?
Well, I guess, as a general rule, whoever gets the motion in first. But I guess if they don't strike some of the provisions, they might not get full support. Stan?
I was hoping, potentially, we could have some comments before anyone makes a action on this, and if it would be the pleasure of the Chair and Mayor. I had a few comments before you...
Please do.
Like I said at the start of this, I didn't have my mind pre-made on this issue. It is an interesting one. Just a couple of brief thoughts. It's getting late. Looking back historically, or some would say prehistoric, it's been so long. When we first enacted indoor smoking ban in Loma Linda, it was before the state had done it. We heard a lot of dire warnings about economic and other problems. It actually worked out fine. Eventually, the state helped us out. Those are real problems, but I think they're overcomeable. My biggest concern is just making sure we separate out potential harms of smoke from real harms. Obviously, I'm a physician, I'm well acquainted with the hazards of second-hand smoke, but I think we tend to gloss over and blur the line of second-hand smoke. Obviously, in closed spaces, no question, but somebody walking down a sidewalk, that you might catch a whiff of remnants of cigarette smoke. I'm not convinced there's any scientific evidence to show that's any worse than all the cars and trains, as we've heard about. So, I do think it is careful to make that, important to make that distinction. And I'm still brought back to the principle of any rule or law, that things should be outlawed if they adversely affect someone else, not if they just potentially do. I'm not convinced all these things, such as, again, just somebody walking down the street with no one else present, has any harm, has potential for harm. So, cut my long-winded speech short, I'm still not ready to vote for this in its present form, and until some of those issues can be addressed.
I just have a comment about the... Is there a requirement that anything we outlaw cause harm, or is nuisance sometimes an adequate incentive? For example, we declared invasive bamboo a nuisance. It wasn't killing anybody, no science showing that it had even the potential to do so. But we outlawed a nuisance, or we at least required controlling of that nuisance. Isn't that enough? Do we have to... Why does smoking have to kill someone to be outlawed or to be restrained?
Who are you asking that to?
Rhetorical.
Okay. Floyd, are you gonna answer that?
Several points. Loma Linda's not the first city to do this in California by any means.
Is your...
Loma Linda's not the first city to enact such an ordinance in California or in the United States by any means, so we're not first on this. Number two, Mike Christensen said it's all about particulate matter. No, it's not true at all. It's, smoking is totally banned on television, which has nothing to do with particulate matter at all. Why is it banned on television? When, really, showing it on television hurts nobody. I mean, there's no smoke, you don't even smell the smoke. The reason it's there is because of the influence it has and the education it has. Why should my grandchildren be submitted to viewing smoking in the city of Loma Linda and influence them to smoke, and it has nothing to do with whether they're breathing it or not? It's education. Society moves in certain directions. For many, many, many years in the United States or in California, you could ride a motorcycle without a helmet on. You can't do that anymore. When, in fact, somebody riding a motorcycle without a helmet, it doesn't injure me at all, but society is moving in that direction. Society is definitely moving in the direction of more and more restriction on where people can smoke and what can be done with it. That's just the way society is moving. Used to be able to smoke on airplanes. My first trip to Africa with my ten-month-old child, we had to sit in a smoking section to ride an airplane. Now, if I, men, if... My kids think I'm crazy when I say it was ever permitted. They can't believe that smoking was ever permitted on an airplane. And it's hard for me to believe, but it was. It's illegal in the city of Loma Linda, I think it's state law, actually. I can't walk down the street nude. It's not hurting anybody. But there's a law that says I can't do it.
Please don't, Floyd. I would be having a real sleep tonight.
I mean, society moves in certain directions, and so we have that kind of a thing. And somebody else did mention something that's important. There is this tension between freedom and security, and freedom and the way society behaves. If Loma Linda consisted of only one person, we would not have to have this law. We wouldn't even have to have a law that tells you on which side of the street to drive. But as soon as you put two people on the same street, now you have to have that law. The closer people live together, the more rules you have to have, just so all society can live peaceably without interfering with each other. It's just a natural law. Simple as that. And that's the direction that society is moving. I think it's time we did that, and that's why I propose this ordinance.
Well?
And I should add, for the sake of the question that Bob asked, I couldn't count on my fingers in the last year how many times... My wife is very sensitive to cigarette smoke. I can tolerate it more than... I mean, I can get a rental car that somebody smoked, and I can... She can't handle that. There's numerous occasions in the past couple of years in the city of Loma Linda where she has been inconvenienced by people smoking on the street, people smoking in parks, people smoking where she was, and she had to literally go and ask them to stop or get us to move our whole picnic, because people were smoking nearby. Lots of inconvenience. And I should also add that the whole United States VA system is now moving, on July 1, I understand, to a total smoke-free VA system.
Okay. Part of what you mentioned, Floyd, is different areas, like parks. We're not talking about parks, I don't think. We're not talking about public workplaces or hospitals. My concern is private residences, whether they are owned or rental units, and the private enforcement. Those are my two issues.
So amend them out of the ordinance?
I am not generally the one that makes motions, so I guess I could. I generally haven't done that. But I guess I will. Why not? Let's do a first here.
It's in state law, you're allowed.
I know, I just haven't generally done that. And by the way, with that kind of change, I believe, Mr. City Attorney, that this would become a first reading again, because we're making quite a few changes here.
Well, Mr. Mayor, that's probably the appropriate way to go. In fact, since this is the first real opportunity to get serious counsel input after a full public hearing, of course, it would be appropriate to get some guidance as to which portions of the posed ordinance you wish to retain, or what you'd like to add, or delete, or modify in some way. You know, we did kind of start out with everything but the kitchen sink here in front of you, and so there may be things where there's not a consensus to keep, for instance, the private enforcement. I forgot to mention just two points from discussing this particular type of ordinance with one city, they, they did comment that the biggest supporters of, of the multi-family residential provisions were the actual owners and management of the apartment complexes, they found it was very beneficial to their management. The other point was on the private enforcement, which does seem to be a little bit beyond what we typically do, uh, they had not had any complaints about that, uh, which either means that it wasn't getting used, or it wasn't getting used very much, to where it was being, anybody was complaining that they were being subjected to those private suits.
Well, I, I guess, if our landlord doesn't want smoking, they're a pretty weak landlord if they need the city laws to help them decide what they're gonna do with their own property. To me, that's a weak landlord, they can't tell their own, they can't, they need a good attorney to help them put that clause in their rental contract, how about that? Maybe I could send you some business there. Okay, I'm gonna make a motion. Now, I think this is a first, that we send this back and ask that we delete the part on private enforcement, and we also delete the part where people can't smoke in their own residence, or in their own yard. I am very specifically not talking about businesses, or public places, I'm talking about people's residences, where they live.
I have a question for you at that point, can I ask?
I know what it's gonna be, too. What about somebody having an office at home?
No.
Okay.
That's not my question.
I knew you were gonna complicate it for me, Floyd.
My, my question is raised by a person who came to me on this ordinance, they said, "We like to enjoy sitting in our hot tub, which is across the fence from my neighbor, and it is impossible to sit in my hot tub because he smokes across the fence a cigar every night, and I can't stand the smoke that wafts into my hot tub." What, what do you do in a situation like that?
I can't solve every problem, the city government can't solve every problem.
I agree.
There's just some things, I'm sorry, government can't solve everything, so, anyway, that was my motion, a rather lengthy one, um, kinda convoluted, but, so let me restate it, take out the section, um, about private enforcement, and take out the section where somebody can't smoke in their own house or rental unit.
So your motion is for the ordinance with those removed?
Yes. Or, I'm sorry, just one minute, if we need to send it back because that's too convoluted and bring it back again, that's okay too, but so far it's for the ordinance, taking those out.
Mr. Mayor, you're getting a lot closer to what I'd like to see, the only other issue that I am concerned about, hearing about, you know, one specific project in town, multi-family housing, um, and their issues that they have, however, I do strongly believe that there is no way that you can effectively keep cigarette or other tobacco smoke from drifting into adjacent units in a multi-family housing, so to balance those two tensions, I would be very much in favor of a phased-in over the next year, or whatever time period everyone thinks is reasonable to ban smoking in, in any multi-unit housing, so that at least there's some time to address that, but I clearly believe that is a real problem, and we need some type of approach to handle it.
Now, now, you're talking, like, say with Loma Linda Springs, they would be unable then to have any smokers live there at all?
Well, I think, uh, over a phased period of time, uh, I would, would agree with that approach, instead of starting at all boom here, July, I believe July 1st is what the current ordinance.
The only concern is then, I guess they would have to start evicting people who were smokers.
But, but doesn't the ordinance give them till 2012?
Yeah, but what about after 2012?
But I don't think it's boom on, on 2008.
No, the question is, where do those people live after 2012? If you, essentially, I'm not saying there shouldn't be areas that, that are smoke-free, I'm just trying to think, how do you, how do you let people who are smokers ever live in a multi-unit structure?
Let me see if I have a second for my motion, however, is there a second for my motion?
For purposes of discussion, I second your motion.
Okay, so I've got a second, now go ahead.
I'm just trying to think, you know, I'm all for keeping the people separate, so the smokers in one place, the non-smokers in another, but if you completely ban the smokers from living in certain types of housing, even if there's enough smokers that wanna all live together in one building, we've completely eliminated them from any, having any place to live, I'm just concerned about that.
Yeah, it's not an overwhelming concern to me, if we give it adequate time to, um, give people a choice if they choose to live in that kind of facility, and I am absolutely convinced that there is no way to eliminate some of that exposure in a multi-family structure, even segregating buildings is somewhat tough and problematic, it's rare that there's absolute, complete separation, so, again, there is an issue, but I feel with adequate time and a phase-in, it's a reasonable thing to do.
Any further discussion?
Well, another possible alternative would be to address the concerns of the twenty percent being an inadequate quantity, that we could set some other percentage, because I think, I think one of the goals is to keep non-smokers out of apartment units that have, you know, just, just think about all that smoke over, let's say, a ten or twenty-year period, when you smoke in a room, it's in the air for a while, and then, after a period, it's gone, where did it go? It went down into the floor, if you've got hard surfaces, you sweep it up and it's gone. If you have a carpet, it's still there, decades later, the first cigarette smoked in that room is still there, and the only way to get rid of it is essentially to replace the carpet, it's almost impossible to wash it out, so, I think there's some concern that, that people are exposed to these things that move in after smokers have been there, and I think there's some desire to say there needs to be a partitioning, like in a hotel.
Dusty, I totally agree with that.
But could we accomplish that by having a different percentage from eighty, twenty?
Well, that's my, that's my concern, is, I have no, or, I'm very sensitive to smoke myself, it's just, I know people who smoke, who've raised the point, I don't like to be around it, but I also recognize the people who choose to be smokers, and I'm just trying to think of a way to balance it, and maybe adjusting the percent or something is the way to do it, but...
I mean, it's, okay, we, we, we wanna give people who smoke a place to live, and you're concerned about that.
That's, that's...
But there's all kinds of apartments where you can't have a pet, and, so where do people with pets live? Where do they live? I don't know, are we gonna chase them out of town? There are apartments that have a pet, you just can't have a pet.
If we were to pass a law that no one in town could have a pet, what would that do?
That's not, that's not a city law, that's a landlord issue.
Right, but I'm simply saying, you, you're asking where do people live, I mean, whether the landlord passes the law or do we pass it, people find places to live, if they can't have a pet, they'll go someplace else.
Uh, it is getting closer to Christmas all the time.
Mr. Mayor, just one quick point of clarification, the, the draft ordinance, the draft ordinance as proposed, does provide for smoking within privately-owned residences, such as single-family homes or condos, the multi-family residence, uh, allows the landlord to regulate and provide for smoking in up to twenty percent, as well as certain designated outdoor areas, so the private home, single-family home, there is provision for smoking there.
Okay, thank you.
I like Dusty's approach on one, one point, it, it, well, yes, I hope, I hope this is what your approach was, though, is, let's say you have twenty-five percent of, of the retired element that are smokers, then we tell one out of five, you have to draw a straw, and you have to quit smoking, the other four can, that's what it sounds like, I'm thinking if we were to say, look, let's let it adjust somewhat along what the demographic lines are, and, and keep them separate, but, uh, I'm just thinking that we're being a little arbitrary, that twenty percent number is kind of an arbitrary number, we just set it out of thin air, I have no idea what the percentages are at Loma Linda Springs, for example.
And, you know, just to counter my own point, just to be balanced.
You can't do that.
Just to be balanced.
You can't argue against yourself.
Well, I, I do it all the time, I have two brains, one on each side.
Okay, which side am I arguing against?
Yeah. The restriction of availability of smoking has had a tremendous influence in decreasing the percentage of Californians who smoke, and I think we, we have to acknowledge that. If you look at, at the first tax increases for smoking back in nineteen ninety-nine, or was it earlier, the, the percentage of smokers in California, eighty, eighty-nine? Yeah, I was, yeah, I'm off by ten years. It's, the percentage of smokers in California plummeted by about one-third, very, within a few years after just a modest increase in smoking taxes, and, and I know, I'm, I'm a libertarian conservative, as well as most of the people on this panel.
I think the entire council's libertarian, almost.
And, and conservative.
Yes.
And experienced.
That's why your brain is arguing against itself, because half the brains are arguing against the other half.
Yeah, and, but, but I'm, what I'm saying is that, part of me wants to say everybody can do whatever they want, but I have to admit that advocacy against smoking has helped a lot of people stop smoking, and it's helped a lot of people not ever start up smoking, and, from tax regulation to, well, workplace regulation, to this, and, and I would venture to guess that most of the people commenting about how this has gone too far, some of them may have felt that the prior changes went too far, and I'm sure there's, there are people all across the spectrum, but is there anybody here who's been bowling in the last ten years, as opposed to before that time? You know, you almost had to throw your clothes away, they stank so badly, uh, prior, and, a lot of the stuff that's come down is technically against the principles of conservatism and libertarianism, but they have had tremendous positive effects, and, uh, being a physician myself, I've had a bit of a change of heart on this, uh, and it violates some of the very dearly-held principles of limited government, but it has resulted in a public health boon that cannot be ignored.
Okay, uh, there is a motion and a second, and the motion was to approve this ordinance, but delete the enforcement for private individuals, and to delete the section on whether smoking would be allowed in either your own home, which is already in there, or in rental units, that is the motion, there is a second on it, any further discussion?
What was the private individual part?
No, no, take out the private enforcement section.
Oh, the private enforcement section, not the private...
I would, I would like to suggest, as my second role, um, that we address these issues separately, the private enforcement and the multi-family residence, because I think they have, I think there are some modifications, short of striking the multi-family residence part, that might be acceptable to the panel, and I think, I think there's, I get the feeling there's consensus on the, striking the private enforcement part.
If that's okay with me, I'm making the motion.
Sure, that's fine.
So, the first motion I will make then, is to delete the private enforcement section. Is there a second for that?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
You're opposed, but it passes, order one. Um, I'll go ahead and make my second motion, uh, which was to delete the section where an individual, uh, or persons cannot smoke in a rental unit. And also to delete the section that requires any percentage of, uh, non-smoking versus smoking units, that's my motion.
I'll second that.
Are we referring to multi-family, would that cover all multi-family?
Multi-family or otherwise, so that's my motion, and that's your second?
I've seconded it.
Okay, any further discussion on that?
Can we clarify what the, what the bill actually says? Does it, it only reply, it only applies to multi-family?
Any rental of any kind.
Well, it doesn't, it doesn't currently say any rental of any kind, does it?
Well, it addresses multi-family, uh, units, which I would interpret as apartments, condominium, condominiums are individually owned, uh, and so they would fall within the, the provision for, that allows smoking in private residential property, so, uh, the multi-family is basically apartments, um, and that's obviously a policy matter.
Because I live in a rental, single-family residence, and I don't think that's even addressed in this.
It, it doesn't address the rental, that, that would tend to be, a rented, single-family home, presumably it would be permitted unless the landlord says no.
I'm just being a one-pusee here in our motion. All in pusee.
Yeah, it's not saying the landlord has to allow smoking, it's just, it's basically leaving it, uh, the landlord's option.
Okay.
So therefore it would not address the concerns of, of keeping smoking units versus non-smoking units? It doesn't address that at all, if you, if you struck that?
Well, I, I'm, I'm going, I'm seconding the, the motion, but I was happy to give some more thought to that, I'm not saying, I'm against that concept, I just don't know tonight how to address the whole thing, I'd like to maybe have staff to give that some consideration, but I don't know how to, I have to second the motion that's here right now, I'm just trying to think, think how to approach it.
With Dusty, landlords can do whatever they want to, I'm just not ready for government to tell the landlords what they can allow in their rental units. Yeah, so...
Acknowledged.
Okay, yeah, and I'm not sure that the sheriff's office wants to try to enforce that either, I, I presume they have other things to do, they need to go make sure they're not smoking down at the donut shop, or something like that, had to throw that in there. Okay, motion and a second, any question on the motion?
And the motion is, we say it one more time, that, that the ordinance would be taken out?
To strike the entire section.
Yes, okay, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
No.
The motion fails, okay.
My idea would be to put a phased-in, um, provision related to multi-family housing that would, um, contain the language that's in this ordinance, but have it phased in over a longer period than, um, what currently is here, I'm open to suggestions, whether one year, two years, whatever is semi-practical, but, um, if you're ready for a motion with a specific time limit, I will, or if you'd like to see if there's a consensus for staff to work on that, um, open to either approach.
You know, I'd agree with you, I would say that what you could put in there is, and, you want me to make a motion?
Sure.
Carrie, Carrie, just stopping before you make a motion, would it be acceptable to the council, then if we're gonna get into numbers like that, that we make the comments and send it back, and don't consider this the first reading tonight, is that acceptable to everyone?
Sure.
Because we're gonna be changing quite a bit here, and, uh, I would like to then look at the entire package before we vote, as long as we understand that.
Is there willingness on the... Is there a willingness on the council's part to allow some room for both parts of the community to coexist? You know, I don't want the non-smokers to have to breathe smoke. I'm just trying to figure out a way to accommodate people who choose to smoke, that we give them some consideration, that they have some place they can live in this town if they, if they want to rent. And maybe a landlord, we aren't going to order, there has to be a smoking area, but we shouldn't outlaw all apartments from having any smoking units, because you're, you're kind of dictating to the whole town. I'm worried about the social engineering side of this, that we're getting to the point where we're becoming a little bit, a little bit too much government.
Yeah, I share those concerns, but I think the, the interests of that partitioning that I was talking about are separate from, from trying to socially engineer how many people smoke, because I think you could drop the number of, you could increase the number of smoking units high enough to accommodate any kind of demographic you like, but still you could partition the units.
Are you okay with partitioning units? I mean, having some smoking and some others?
I appreciate going to hotels that have a non-smoking area where I don't have to smell whatever that smoke eraser stink is that they put in there.
Couldn't agree more. Yeah, that's all I'm saying.
So, when you make a motion, this is direction to staff, just to clarify. So, Floyd, Dan, I think one of you is ready here.
First of all, it does not completely outlaw smoking in all rental units. Eighty percent. Number one. Number two, that is phased in between now and 2012.
Four years.
That's four years, that is a four-year phase in. We do have the phase in, and we don't outlaw it in all units. So there is a place in town for people to smoke, and it's phased in. Doesn't happen to much.
Can I address that? Loma Linda Springs, I don't know if you're still here. What was the percentage of people who smoke?
You know, I'm not sure. We've not had any complaints for secondhand smoke. I am here, and I'm doing a survey anyway.
Ma'am, to answer the question, we're going to ask you to come forward.
Could you come up, the reason is, you made a comment earlier, and what concerned me is, you said, if this went into enforcement, say, in a month, you'd have to start giving notices to people. But you gave a number or a percent? I didn't quite follow.
No, when I, I was referring to the 20, 80% split that the ordinance or the bill specifies. And 80%, I was saying 80% of our units comes out to 355 apartments, and only 89 would be available for smokers. In the senior population, unfortunately, there's a higher percentage of smokers in that age group.
How do you know?
Just from experience. You know, I've been in the business 30 years, and I just know different apartments and age groups, and I just.
And part of the reason for that is that the young people have grown up
Exactly.
under more regulation, and fewer of them smoke.
No, in education, and as you said, and it's almost a situation that will, what do I say, cure itself, as the generations, people moving into the apartments, and the next generation, they're going to be less and less smokers, so it's going to cure itself. It doesn't need a government law, you know?
Would you be as opposed to a lower percentage of non-smoking?
I would consider a flip. I mean, to start off with, we were going to voluntarily experiment to see what the demand is. We want to meet the demands of our renters. I mean, it's good business sense, you know? We don't want people to suffer from secondhand smoke if that's an issue. So we were going to even voluntarily try one building, and see if we could, if there is a strong enough rental population that, that demands non-smoking environment. We don't know that it is.
Do you currently change out carpets between renters?
Whenever we need to. When you were saying that, man, I wanted us to jump up. You can come by our property anytime, and you can walk into any unit, and you're not going to smell smoke. If there is a smoker in there, we have to change the carpet, yes, we do. We consider that damage. And the previous tenant, if there was a smoker, they pay for that. So, we do not turn a unit and allow any kind of bad odor or whatever. We wouldn't have renters.
And do you, do you get that expense from the renters, or does it go to your bottom line?
No. The, that, we, we can only charge turnover costs. If, if we have to change carpet because of smoke damage, the previous resident pays for that.
Okay.
And it just covers our cost. We don't, we don't make money on it. But, but the 80, 20% is so, so unreal, is so unrealistic. I mean, we would literally have to come back to the city and say, we can't run this business now. You know, we'd have to, it's age restricted, it's already a very limited market. If we further limit it by saying only non-smokers can rent there, we'd have a real problem.
Do you allow pets?
We allow cats, yes. And, and of course, handicapped and, yes.
But don't you think you miss out on some renters who would want small dogs?
We do.
You don't allow anybody?
But there's, there's many, there's many apartments in the area that allow dogs.
So there's lots of apartments in the areas that allow smokers?
And our, our properties are a little different. We have interior hallways. It's a little different configuration. Are you familiar with the property?
Absolutely. And I've been, I have walked on the property and to visit friends of mine, and it have been severely inconvenienced by people smoking on their porch.
Hmm, okay. I'm not, we've not had complaints.
Although, I should say, I do enjoy the way you keep it up. I must give you a lot of credit for that. I do enjoy it.
But, but one thing I, you know, we were not notified of the hearing, and I think it's such an important issue that, that really impacts so many businesses, and especially multifamily housing. And I would think everybody should, we should have another hearing perhaps, and be able to have other
We will have another hearing.
people participate and.
We really appreciate the input.
Yeah, thank you.
Let's have a motion. At this stage, I'm not caring too much which way it goes. I do, but I shouldn't have said that. Okay, is there a motion?
On the multifamily rental issue.
Yes.
Floyd, what, sorry for dialogue, but what time period would you be comfortable with, with phasing in, something like I mentioned?
Well, it's already phased in until 2012. So.
Mr. Mayor, just specifically on that point, current smokers who are tenants have the right to request that they be designated as one of the grandfathered smoking units.
You're not going to move anybody out because they're smokers.
Yes.
There's only a lot of new people coming in, and it's phased in over, from now to 2012.
Well, I guess that's a little bit where Dusty was referring to before. I'm a little bit of schizophrenic on this. I, again, some provisions, such as the private enforcement that was taken out, I'm very opposed to. I still, I can sense I'm on the losing end. I have a real problem outline, outlawing someone just walking down the street if no one else is there. But I still, you know, these arguments about how you're going to protect other people from secondhand smoke, we heard all those 12 years ago with the restaurants. A lot of them proposed they were going to have separate ventilation for different rooms. It just turned out that it didn't work. Nobody could show a way that worked. You're still going to expose people in most multifamily units to secondhand smoke unless you could convert the complete complex to a smoking complex. And I haven't seen any real good examples of that working, so that's why I would like to see a phase in that does provide for a complete ban on multifamily, and.
I would support that too, but I don't think we have the votes for that.
So, what is the motion?
Well, I will attempt it then. I would like to see that we have a phase in, that will be phased in over the years, as mentioned in the ordinance 2012. The time period that the ordinance is phased in, there will be no smoking allowed in multifamily housing unless there is a way to prove that there was no exposure to secondhand smoke in the units in that complex, that, that were not.
So your motion is a phase in?
Phase in for complete smoking ban in multifamily housing. That's the bottom line, by 2012. I was going to say, you know, if you could prove that there wasn't any exposure, but it's not practical. It's been tried again with the restaurants. I'll strike that part.
I'll second it.
Okay. Does everybody understand the motion?
Okay. I think what I'm hearing is, there's a grandfather provision?
I wouldn't go for a grandfather. I am asking for a four-year phase in.
So.
At some point in time, it becomes just like we've heard with the VA system, with other entities, that, that does take effect, and after that time, there would not be smoking allowed.
What would happen from a standpoint of personal privacy? I mean, in other words, if somebody lived in a, in a place and smoked, what would happen in four years? Would they be evicted?
Well, I think those are, we have four years to solve those problems, and certainly I think there's ways to deal with that.
What, what would you have, I mean, seriously, I do landlord-tenant work. What would you, I mean, I hate to ask, but what would we have in mind, that we go to people and say, you need to fill out a question here. If you smoke, you need to move out of town in four years unless you own a place?
Would look to.
I hate to sound that harsh.
Look to our staff and for legal help. If they feel it's totally unenforceable and unworkable, then certainly we'd modify it, but I'd like to send at least an attempt to ban this over a phased-in period, because I, I do think there's no way to prevent exposure to other residents and staff.
When I've stayed in hotels, I've stayed on, obviously, non-smoking floors, and I haven't noticed smoke coming from the smoking floors. I mean, they're segregated. Is there no way that, like Loma Linda Springs is talking about having a non-smoking building, that if they're completely separate buildings, why would, why wouldn't that solve it?
I'll just give the example of Marriott Hotel and all their properties worldwide. They have found those solutions of segregating wings or floors. It's just impractical. It's true, there's a higher turnover, but yet multifamily housing has certainly a turnover that I don't think invalidates why Marriott and other hotel properties have said. It's just not something that they care to try and do, because it doesn't work well.
But obviously Marriott's gotten to make that choice. If, if the government ordered Marriott and every other hotel company to allow no smokers, where would the smokers stay? In other words, what we're doing is, we're, government's coming and saying, you shall not allow any smokers to be renters.
Well, I, I think.
That is what we're saying.
I think the analogy is not entirely apropos, and the reason is that when you go to a rent, when you go to a hotel, you can be forbidden to smoke there, and you can be a smoker that doesn't smoke, or that only smokes off property. I think when it becomes a residence, you're essentially legislating that someone cannot be a smoker.
That's right.
Which is a little bit more harsh.
That's what I'm saying.
Let me ask.
Than just saying you can't smoke on this property.
Yeah, I understand for a day, somebody can go, choose to go to Marriott and they can't smoke there. But if you're telling somebody who's lived in a place, say, 10 years, we are ordering you to cease smoking, or you move, and you can't live anywhere else in town. I'm just telling you, that's what it sounds like.
I would like to ask staff and some of the tobacco prevention folks whether there are cities and towns that have had ordinances to outlaw smoking in multifamily units.
Yes.
May I ask, Mr. Mayor, may I have permission for them to respond?
Yes, there are. There's several. But locally, I can tell you that the city of Temecula adopted an ordinance last year. Their percentage isn't as high as yours, but they knew they wanted to do it, and so they adopted that policy that requires 25%. But they're one of the lowest cities for the percentage rate. And what you're talking about, what we're talking about is contiguous units, so that you don't have a smoking apartment here, a smoke-free apartment next door, and two that are non-smoking. But if you designate 80% of contiguous units smoke-free, and then the 20% that aren't contiguous be for the smokers. Calabasas has multiple units, ordinance for smoke-free zones.
How have they handled the people who are smokers? Now, do they tell them, because what we're talking about here is a total ban on anybody in town living in a rental unit smoking.
Yeah, I mean, that sounds absolutely wonderful, but it's, even as a tobacco-free advocate, I'm not sure I would advise that. What I had with the apartment complex in San Bernardino, they went smoke-free within a matter of six months, but what they did is everybody had to come down and get an addendum to the lease. And they did it that way. It all has to do with your paperwork towards the lease, so that they know that it's coming, and then they have the option.
Did they end up having to evict anyone based on that, that you're aware of?
No. In fact, they have smokers living there, but they walk out of their apartment, and they walk across the front plaza, and they go out the gate, and they stand there and smoke. Now, that might not be ideal either, but they're living smoke-free inside their units.
But we wouldn't allow smoking here outside.
I know you wouldn't.
So, if you can't smoke in, you can't smoke out. Where do you smoke?
I'm not sure, but how many people in Loma Linda do you think that's going to affect?
That's my point. It hasn't been an issue.
Well, but on the other side, it, you're actually guaranteeing that people that really want to live smoke-free and cannot buy a house can do that in rental units.
See, look at the freedom on the other side. Yeah, I never hear that comment from you guys. Don't, shouldn't there be, shouldn't I be free to be a renter and not be forced to live next to a smoker? Where should I live? Do I be forced out of town?
Are you, are you having any problems with neighbors smoking?
No, but I'm sad. I'm arguing the other side of the point, is you, the other side of the point is just as fair to argue. Where should the non-smokers who are forced to be renters, where should they live? Do they have to move out of Loma Linda in order to live smoke-free?
Floyd, I'll answer that for you. We're a little bit like Congress right now, perish the thought. Congress specializes in solving problems that really don't exist sometimes. And usually they do that after some crisis or emergency. And we're doing that without a crisis or an emergency. So, I'm not even sure. See, I, I've been on the council for 20 years, and there's some people that think that that's long enough. We'll find out. But I have never had people complain to me about this issue.
I have.
I have too. And I, if I can comment, again, I'm not hearing any practical examples, and I will not go forward with my radical solution of total phase-out, but we'll look to other cities, such as Temecula, Calabasas, with the percentages that they've listed. I'd like to see those incorporated into ours, since I'm hearing a lack of support for a total phase-out. But I, I think a lot of the issue, why, you know, various landlords haven't heard a lot, people are just, feel they can't do any good by saying things, or they just don't want to cause trouble. It's a real issue. So, whatever percentages and time periods that staff can find that other cities have used, I'm comfortable with that.
All right. Is there a philosophical willingness to, if we could find a way to roughly find out what the percentage are, percentages are, say, if Loma Linda Springs did a, did a survey, and we got a little more evidence, because I'm worried about just shooting in the dark, saying, here, here's an arbitrary percentage. If we were to do a survey and ask, I don't know if all the other apartments in town even are aware of this, that we're about to pass a major law here that's going to revolutionize their existence. But if they were to do a survey and find out what the percentages are, and they could figure out a way to segregate the smokers and non-smokers, roughly, maybe it's 50/50. We have 10 units are non-smoking and 10 are smoking. Would, would you all be comfortable with that?
As long as there was freedom to reduce the number of smoking units from that amount, because I would hate for them to be constrained by having so many smoking units, the non-smokers wouldn't want to go there.
What I was, I, Dusty, I was only using an example based on, but let's say the demographics maybe change, and maybe you do change it in future years. I'm just trying to get a little bit of evidence now before we go pass a law, because somebody's got to cope with this law, and it's easy to pass a law that everybody else has got to figure out how to, you know, how to live with. I'm concerned, I don't like smoke myself. I'm just trying to figure out how to not overreach so far that you pass a law without really knowing what the effect's going to be. And you may not be helping, helping non-smokers as much as you think. You may just be creating difficulties for people who do smoke, and you don't know what the percentages are.
You know, we're, we're, we're trying to go in the dark here a little bit, and we do have other agenda items. Shall we just refer this back to staff, along with two members of the council, and come up with something without trying to take further action this evening?
Yeah, I'd like to have, like, if somebody could go on the Yeah, I'd like to have, like, if, if somebody could go in the Chamber of Commerce, either newsletter or, or if we knew who the apartment managers are in the city and at least the survey could go out asking if they could give us some input because I'd appreciate that.
We, you know, let's see what, we do have a number 20%, which is, I think, reasonable with a phase into 2012. We have that in here.
Are you wanting to make a motion?
And I would move to leave that in. That is a phase in and it has a percent. The lady even said that it's going to go down as people age, that this rate is going to go down. And the other nice thing about this is, the other nice thing about this is, this is a bill that is being passed by a council, not a measure on a ballot. And so if it doesn't work and things really don't, the council can change their mind at some point. This can be changed if it needs to be changed.
Good point.
Two months from now, 60% of us could be gone.
It could be changed, yeah.
That's correct.
Things can be changed on the ballot and have been to.
Okay, is, there, there's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second. And the motion is basically to leave the wording in there as it is as it relates to multifamily housing.
Yes.
Okay? Everybody understand the motion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, no.
No.
No. Motion fails.
I would like to put in another motion.
Okay.
That changes, changes the numbers to 70/30, leaves everything else the same.
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second. Anybody that can add can figure out where this one's going, since you made the motion.
Can we, can we, while we're waiting for the second reading, can we at least have the city contact the apartment owners and ask them to do a little bit of survey to find out if that's...
My, my motion includes that concept of getting input from the multifamily managers to find out what some of the...
Then I'll join your second.
I'm trying to close this all. I appreciate your efforts.
I second you, I second the second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, 70/30, but also get additional info...
Right.
Input from apartments.
Right.
Okay. And by the way, this is not the first reading. It's going to come back as an entire ordinance.
This is the zeroth...
Any further discussion?
The zeroth reading?
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no.
No.
No. Motion passes.
You want it 60/40?
At this stage, it's going back to staff.
I'm sorry.
Good luck.
Mr. Mayor, I had my one other motion. I have a sense where it's going, but I would like to strike the provision of outlawing smoking on a street if, um, if that's still in here, which I believe it is.
You wouldn't be able to smoke on the sidewalk?
I have no problem if someone chooses to smoke out there and no one else is within a reasonable distance. I guess we've used the 20 feet, I think, in other illustrations. But some guy walking down the sidewalk or gal with no one else in sight on that sidewalk, I've got a problem with that.
Of course, if none of it is nobody's in sight, that is not a problem anyway because nobody can report him, is there?
No, we have, no, we're gonna, we might have a camera, smoking camera.
Yeah, we've got cameras up at the...
I'd second, I'd second your, your, your motions, Stan.
We could have them...
Dusty, I know where you're going, so...
What if somebody were driving through the red light cameras, smoking a cigarette?
They're nailed. That's right.
Okay, or walking through a red light.
No, the police department's going to have to have experts who can detect with infrared on the film.
The problem's the red light on the end of the cigarette.
I guess, Stan, as much as I want to bring this to a close...
That's my last one, I promise.
My comment was to protect property rights and let them smoke inside their own rental unit. You're saying out in the street where they will impact other people, it's okay.
Are you saying where they cannot?
It's opposite side here.
Well, I'll admit that I think there, it's the same principle involved. I just haven't seen buildings with multi-units effectively able to isolate cigarettes or other tobacco smoke from the other units.
Okay.
And the outdoor, walking down a sidewalk with no one within 100 feet, I don't see how you expose someone else to tobacco smoke there. That's my reason why the difference, thank you.
So, that's a motion. Is there a second?
I seconded it.
You seconded it. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, no.
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 Okay, that one fails. I think we're getting close to the end of this issue. I want to encourage the staff to have a fun time with this.
Mr. Mayor, would you like this brought back then for a new first reading at the next meeting? Is, is that the consensus or do you want?
Yeah, it would have, we're, we're asking that it come back as a first reading.
At the next meeting?
And this is not a first reading this evening.
Correct.
And ma'am, you wanted to make comments, you can make them to staff now. And I apologize, I just want to keep this meeting going. Okay, we have the consent calendar next, what your items voted. I'm going to ask two items to be polled from the consent calendar and that's items 15 and 16.
I'll second the rest of the consent calendar. Just one quick comment, item 11, I think's pretty exciting. We've been working for a long time about undergrounding utilities and really appreciate the city managers' work, especially on this. And here we have it before us, so exciting activities.
Okay, motion and a second. Actually, I have two, two motions, so I'm going to call yours a second. On the consent calendar, any opposition? But pulling items 15 and 16. Since there's no opposition, so ordered. Item 15, and I see Ken Breyer has been sitting here patiently on this item. We did visit on the phone earlier this morning and I did have a call from Congressman Lewis's office. Very specifically, just to go back a little bit. The city wrote a letter, I had a visit with Congressman Lewis about three, maybe four weeks ago, as to whether we could still get the federal funding for the Stewart Street project and not do the NEPA study. And Dr. Hart also wrote a letter. We sent it to the university's lobbying firm, a lobbyist, and we also sent it directly to Congressman Lewis. The answer is no way. Which means that $1.75 million that we were expecting to use on this project is no longer there. And...
If you don't do the study.
If we don't do the study, that's correct. If we do the study, it significantly adds to the time for this project. And I'm going to ask Jarv in a second how much time it adds. To me, I'll make a little editorial comment. This is a prime case of government going too far. We've got a SEQA study for the state of California. We've got a NEPA study, which is National Environmental Protection Act or something like that, study, which are basically the same studies, just adds cost to the projects. If the state of California wants to save money on its budget, they should do away with laws that, parallel federal laws or vice versa. How long would it take to do the NEPA study in addition?
Probably another, another additional 18 months or a year and a half.
I mean, you know...
Beyond what would take for you to do SEQA?
Why does it take that much more time?
Because NEPA requ... You want to answer that, Depp?
Am I asking the wrong person here?
Well, he probably has more experience with, with NEPA studies for, for transportation projects, but, but NEPA has a whole bunch of other levels on top of it than, than SEQA does in terms of review processes. It involves federal highway administration. It involves Caltrans district aid. It involves Caltrans structural at the state. It involves a, a number of other agencies. And, and so it, it adds layer upon layer of bureaucracy and each one has to sign off on it before it can, it can finally graduate to, gosh, you get the funding. So, yeah, it, it, it's much more complicated than SEQA.
Well, it's just, anyway, the bottom line here, in my opinion, it's way too much dual levels of government above us here. And I just want the council to be aware that we do not have a, an agreement with the university as to how the addition of $1.75 million will be funded. Now, I have suggested to Mr. Breyer, and maybe you'll come forward in a minute, that we need to have a new dialogue to go over that particular issue. So, I just want this council to be aware that if we do award this contract, it's not on the same basis that I first presented it to the council. Do you have any comments, Ken? Welcome.
Ken Breyer, we met with Jarv and a contractor estimator this morning, or this afternoon. And we have a second estimate that was prepared with much more detailed documents than what we presented, I guess, in January, February sometime, that were within the same range as what we had before. And I may, probably a little bit cheaper. And the indication of the contractor is he thought it was a ripe bidding environment and he thought he could do, I think the word was, he'd contract today. If we, if we wanted to bond for this work and do it today, he'd do it. So he felt confident with, with the numbers. We have some steps to go, but the, the timing of this is becoming increasingly important to the university.
And, and we all understand that.
And so we are working, I've talked to our administrators. They're trying to arrange a meeting for us as soon as possible.
Okay.
Yeah, your question, when you said that you'd met with the contractor, you're talking about the price of the project itself?
We, we've been working with private engineers to design the project and Jarv had arranged with us to meet with a independent estimator to, to price it out as a third party to, to make sure that we were on target budget-wise.
And that's the price of actually doing the project? It's nothing to do with the NEPA study or the...
No, no, that's the cost of the work.
Yeah, okay.
Cost of the work.
Is, is this one of these issues where we've drawn straws or is this something that we're all discussing? Is this a contract with the university or is this not? I'm, I'm, I don't want to cause anybody problems by debating this in a way that causes a conflict for anybody.
Well, I don't think we've gone that far yet, but...
It was a city project at first.
Yeah.
Yes, if we reach a point where there's, we're negotiating a contract...
I don't want to suck any conflicts in.
With the university, then we would have to deal with conflict issues. This particular item in front of you to, is a pass-through to have some environmental preliminary work done. So that probably would not rise to the effect of a conflict.
Nobody, nobody's got a problem yet.
Okay.
Okay, having made that disclosure to the council, is there a motion here?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any opposition? So ordered. Item 16...
Mr. Mayor, while we're doing that, can we ask staff to do some exploring on potentially other alternative funding issues? If we don't have those funds available to, I don't know if there's any other sources that we can tap. Is that a given that we're already doing that?
Mr. Zibriek, Ken Breyer is setting up a meeting with myself and Dr. Hart in, in the next few days.
Great.
And any of you are welcome to come along. Or maybe some of you should go without me, doesn't matter. Actually, I think I prefer that. But that's, that's where we're headed right now.
Great.
Does anybody want to come on for that meeting? If so, let me know later.
Well, would that start posing a conflict?
Yes.
Once you get into the decision-making process of, and influencing that decision, that's the point where you do need to be cognizant of potential conflicts and we will have to address those.
And does it, does it go back to the original deciders? The original straws drawn? And then what happens if this negotiation extends past an election? Does that cause new straws to be drawn or how's that work?
Well, once you, you draw straws and you have a quorum to act on a particular item, you can continue forward with that same quorum acting on any, anything related to that action if that's the understanding of the council at the beginning. If there's a change in the makeup of the council at some point in the future for any reason, then you would have to redraw straws at that point.
When a quorum consists of three, does the Brown Act reduce the discussion to individuals and no two may gather together to discuss it?
It, it would at that point.
So then no two people could go?
That's right. That's exactly right.
Good point.
No, that's, that's my understanding.
So I'm the one?
Yes.
Or you're the one?
Well, I think it's, yeah, but I think you've already got it set up. I mean, it's fine with, it's fine with me if you want to do it. But I mean, if you want to delegate it to one of the others, after straw's drawn, I mean, it could be one other council person too.
Okay. Give me call and roll. Item 16, Mr. Zibriek, why don't you just explain this a little bit more? I didn't want to just...
Very briefly.
Go over it without comment.
Yeah, very briefly, and we had talked a little bit about this before. And, and of course, there has been some language drafted up. We are going, as oil prices go higher, it's just personal belief, but I think everybody on this council has that same belief from just past discussions. We're going to need as a community to be viable, getting people in and out of here. And I believe it's destined in time that the rail line that goes through town to Palm Springs and Coachella Valley will become a major corridor for passenger trains. It isn't now. Right now, it has three Amtrak trains a week each direction. We're not a stop. I believe that we have enough people coming in here as a job center and for other reasons, we're a major magnet and enough people could access this that we ought to make it known now that we would be very interested in having a transit center. There's some transit centers that I've been through. Oceanside has one, Escondido's got one, Irvine has one, and there are others. Some of you have been through. I would like to make it known that we're interested in having that and I think it ought to be close to the university. And it would provide a base for shuttle operations, other things like that down the line. But I think we want to make ourselves on the map for going that direction. And, and RCTC would obviously, of course, Bob, you know, they would be involved in any line going out to the Coachella Valley because that's Riverside County again. So you'd have a little piece of San Bernardino County connecting up to Riverside County, two ends of the county. I think we ought to have a spot. So anyway, that's, that's the goal and we want to make, I think, we've all talked about this before, so I don't think it's revolutionary, but I think we ought to make a formal resolution and then wherever any of us are that this comes up, we can say, hey, we've taken a position that we want to be considered for a transit center.
Is there a motion?
Yes, I'll make the motion.
Second? I'll make the second. Did you say second? Okay. Any further discussion? Any opposition? So ordered. Okay, item 19, is there a motion?
Second.
Second, or do seconds at once?
You did it.
Dusty, second. Any opposition? So ordered. Item 20, is the applicant here for this project or did the applicant give up?
If I may respond to that, Mayor Christman. We have been in touch with the applicants, Mr. and Mrs. Magro. They did have a commitment earlier this evening for their child's high school orientation. They went to that and we told them that their item would possibly be heard later on in the meeting. We did work with them extensively in the month of April. If you'd like, I can just go over some of the things real quick and make it very quick. Again, this is the property on Windsor Drive at the east end of the cul-de-sac, across the street from Bryn Mawr Elementary School. Originally, they were asking for three feet of tubular fencing on the block wall. They are not, no longer pursuing that based on discussions with staff. They are asking for an approximate five-foot block wall. I'll show you the cross-section. This meets the zoning code requirement for up to a six-foot block wall at the rear property line. I quote that, the zoning code section. An appeal or variance is no longer needed. And this is what they're asking to do. The previously mentioned five, approximately five-foot block wall in front of the existing wall that's there. The only thing is they're going to need to provide engineered plans to our building division. This will require a permit from both the pl... This will require a permit from both the planning and building division. However, if this is not feasible, the applicants would have the option to pursue obtaining a fence permit to put up a fence in this location where the cross-section shows the block wall. Staff is available for comments.
How does this? Obviously, they can do this.
Yes.
But how does this? How is this a better solution than what they asked for?
Well, originally, they were asking three feet of tubular fencing here on the existing block wall. And I forgot to mention also, in the meeting in February, Councilman Wigsby had asked to comment about that the applicant should look into adding one course of block where the wall was only up to 37 inches. I didn't provide the photos here on the presentation during the staff report. The two, for them to go forward with a, with a five-foot block wall would give them approximately up to 24 inches of additional height, which would address their concerns for visibility.
No, but I mean, how, how is this, which they can do, an improvement? An actual improvement to the city over what they originally requested?
Well, it's this, it's, it's a block wall, same type of material. They're going to try and match it. The only thing is, the engineered plans need to come, come in.
No, no, you're missing my point. My point is, how is this proposal?
All right.
An improvement over their original request to put their tubular thing on top of the, the old wall? How is it an improvement?
It's the type of material. The, the tubular fencing was just going to be up to three feet in height, like what you see on the south side of George Street there at Whittier. This is going to be up to 24 inches. So, they shortened their, their height, height request. Went from three feet up to two feet.
If I might, I, I don't know that it is an improved solution. It's a permitted solution. They don't need a variance to do this.
Right, but I mean.
Well, then the obvious, the obvious point is, are we better off granting a variance rather than, than giving them something they can do, which is worse?
Right, and that's a decision that the council can make. You have the option of approving the variance. But at this point, staff was not able to make findings in support of the variance because the situation is not, the situation is of the applicant's own making because of the pool and, and the way that it was put in. It raised the elevation of the pad. And it basically placed the property in a position where they don't have the privacy that they would like to have. Other properties where variances are granted because we can make findings typically are, they have a slope that other people in the neighborhood don't have. And they need, you know, some relief for either fencing or additional yard area. So, they have to put in some kind of a retaining wall to, to extend their yard area. I mean, that's just an example. And that's a, a natural condition or it's a condition that was created by the developer. But it wasn't created by the homeowner. It's just a situation that relates to the lot and the dimensional, the dimensional requirements of the lot.
Was there the structural capability of that wall to add additional layers?
The engineering that would be required to add block of any kind would be fairly expensive to do. Rod iron and, and fencing materials are not that, they're, they're not that, they don't add that much weight to the wall. And, and we believe that the engineering would, would support it. But additional block and rebar would be a lot more weight added to an existing structure. So, you'd have to do an engineering study to see if it, it was feasible. And that can be very expensive to do.
Looking on from the, what happens on the inside? I don't care what it looks like from their pool. But looking from the outside, the public is going to see. Is it, would it look, is it going to look better this way or with their original idea? With some rod iron on it or whatever it is? What, what's going to have a better visual appeal from outside?
If I may answer, the, the nice thing about this request is that it's, they're asking that it's a block wall, same type of material. It would be consistent with what's already visible if you're at the bottom on the sidewalk on Whittier Avenue or if you're across the street, as opposed to just limiting, limiting it to, up to three feet of tubular fencing where it would stand out in relation to the rest of the, the existing rear wall along Whittier Avenue.
So, then you're saying if they, if they put one, two, or if they wanted to go 24 inches, three courses of eight-inch block on top of that wall, it would be an engineering and construction nightmare as opposed to creating a wall eight inches farther onto their property that sticks up?
Yes.
That's what you're saying?
Yes.
There would still be engineering required, but not.
But, but it would be load-bearing on the ground behind the current wall, which would be easier to engineer than bearing on the existing wall directly?
To an extent, yes.
First for the life of me, I have never understood how much engineering there can be to put up a wall when walls are put up all the time. It seems like you could go down to the 7-Eleven store and buy plans to do engineering to do that. I mean, it's just, it's there all the time. What's so difficult?
Have you, have you built retaining walls and built a house? I've got experience.
Retaining walls is different than just building a.
Are you building a house, Dusty?
I, I, I am a developer.
Oh, my goodness.
Of a single-family residence, yes.
Spare me the thought. Okay, what's the part of the council?
I haven't heard any strong reasons to not go forward with staff's recommendations. Do you want us to formally, you know, deal with the appeal? Or is the applicant willing to drop that and move ahead with the non-appealable solution? Just looking for procedural details, what we need to do if that's the wish to go ahead with your recommendations.
No problem. We did convey to the applicant that we would need something in writing for them to drop the request for the original variance and appeal and for them to go forward with obtaining a, a permit from both the planning and the building divisions for the proposed five-foot block wall.
So, do we need to take any action if they do that?
Well, if they, if we don't have anything and you want to take action tonight, and I'll, I'll rely on the, the good judgment of our city attorney, you could deny the appeal and then allow staff to work with the applicant towards the, the fencing solution outlined in the staff report. That does not, that doesn't really require council approval. That's a staff level issue, a ministerial permit.
Nor does this wall require approval.
No.
That's what she said.
Well, if, if you approve, you have a variance and an appeal, and an appeal of the planning commission decision before you. Since we don't have anything in writing from the Magros withdrawing the appeal and the variance, the council could either deny the variance and allow staff to work with the applicant at the staff level, which, what they're asking for now would be a staff level approval. Or you could just allow us to work with the applicant and, and not take any action.
I would, I would like to move that we, that we continue this matter to the future. And if they, if they withdraw their appeal, then it won't come back. And if they don't withdraw their appeal, then it will come back.
Okay, there's a motion.
I, I second that, that makes sense.
There's a second. Troy?
I just want to ask, Mike, Mike, do you think that building that second wall on site is a better solution visually from the whole city than putting up what they wanted? Did the planning commission feel that way? Or did the planning commission even consider the possibility of this second wall? Or did you, did you not know about that?
We, we did tell, we did include in our staff report to the planning commission that if they had built inside the wall, or if they chose to build inside the wall, that they didn't need a variance or a planning commission approval, remember?
Yeah, there's another question here.
If they, if they built on their own property and not on, not adding height to that wall.
It actually turns out, if they wanted to do it, they could build a six-foot wood fence.
Yes.
Which would not match the block wall that's there.
That's correct.
Which would be visually a whole lot less appropriate than probably putting the rod iron on top. I mean, this is a strange situation.
Floyd, Floyd, since this is the theater of the absurd tonight, they could build a wall every eight inches, eight inches higher. And they could have chichen itza in their yard. They could go up to a complete pyramid if they wanted to.
Quite, quite interesting.
I'll, I'll make my comment. It seems to me like what they wanted last meeting would be more aesthetically pleasing from the street than what's before us here.
The rod iron?
Whatever they wanted last time. I mean, I didn't really have a problem with it.
It was a rod iron camp, right.
So, anyway, but there's a motion and a second. Basically, we'll continue this item, whether, pursue other options. Is that your motion?
Yes, at least open the option of coming back for the wall.
Right, I mean, they, they pursue the rod iron if, if they want to come back here and talk about it. They're not here tonight, so we really can't.
Call for the question.
I'm calling for the question. Any opposition to the motion? So ordered. Thank you. Okay, item 21 is being continued. So, we will get that one dealt with. Item 22, and I see Fred Ramos is here. He's been sitting through a long meeting. My comment is, if we name something a Bryn Mawr Memorial Park, it's almost like the city is a memorial and the city's no longer with us or something. And we want to acknowledge that the city is still there. So, I like to name Bryn Mawr, but I don't know if memorial works very well here. But Fred, did you have any comments on this this evening?
Five minutes or more.
Or less?
Three minutes. That's why, my name is Fred Ramos and I live at 26445 First Street in historical Bryn Mawr. We discussed it for quite a bit and we came up with different names that were suggested. I wanted to name it Ralph Hernandez for what he contributed and being that he was born there. But other people decided that they wanted to call it something for the people that contributed to the little town, like Rosales and Hernandez and Delgado. I'm still not happy with the solution that came out or the names that came out. So, we're leaving it up to you people to decide what you want to do. Right now, I'm, right now, I can't answer anything because I was at the, your medical center with my daughter. I'm a loster, so I have nothing to say right now. It's up to the council to decide what name, what appropriate name they want to name it.
Is your daughter okay?
I hope so.
Can we, can we put this off and continue it, a, a meeting? And then we'll all have a chance to talk more?
No urgency.
There's a.
Any urgency here?
No, there's nither.
Okay, we'll continue this item.
I have one little comment. The reason I put it on tonight is because we plan to have a, a ribbon cutting at the next, May 20th. And, and I would like to have the name for the park, but, but I can hold on.
We can live without a name.
But one of the suggestions was to have the names of the veterans from Bryn Mawr. And I think that's a wonderful idea.
This is what, this is why we came up with Memorial Park because we have proposed of, we have one letter from Mr. Lim Lee Aloha, who came up with three names of the veterans who, who passed away during three different wars or a couple of wars. And then we also received a letter from Mr. Fred Delgado, which have a list of how many, nine, how many names? I can't remember. Thirty, 50 names? Pardon me?
Forty-five, fifty.
Yeah, 45, 50 names of the veterans on that list. So, instead of picking one or the other names, we went with Memorial Park.
I propose Bryn Mawr Veterans Memorial Park. Because that takes away the stigma that we're memorializing Bryn Mawr as opposed to the veterans of Bryn Mawr.
Exactly, exactly.
And then people can call it Bryn Mawr Park because that's a contraction of the whole land.
That, that was the first name is, is Bryn Mawr Park. But then we have a comment that, well, what happened? We have somebody who's not a veteran, who, who has provided a service to the Bryn Mawr communities.
I move that we name it Bryn Mawr Veterans Memorial Park. Second.
You folks, can I ask, how do you folks feel about that?
Like I said, right now, I can't, I can't really, I can't discuss this right now. Because I'm not, I'm not an open-minded.
Mr. Delgado, maybe you got a comment?
Please go forward.
Gentlemen, good evening. It's getting past my bedtime.
Mine too.
I'm Fred Delgado. I, first of all, I like to welcome myself to this fair city of Bryn, of Loma Linda, still accustomed to Bryn Mawr. Yes, and I live in Bryn Mawr, 25905 on Juanita Street. And I must commend this body for developing this, this park in Bryn Mawr, or Loma Linda now. The reason this, the reason that these names or this role of names came into being, as being suggested to, to name the park in honor of those people was that because unbeknownst to many, many individuals new to this city, I mean, new, because before this patch of ground was, was developed, it used to be a grapefruit orchard. Before an orchard came into being, it used to be a playground. Playground where a majority of these individuals who served their country honorably got to play in that field. As strange as it is, it did a full circle. Now, that same playing field that they, those young men at that time played on is now being, is now serving a generation of, of new, of new people. So, being that what it is, but people thought that it would be appropriate that these people, that these soldiers, these veterans be honored in that, in that way.
So, would, would Bryn Mawr Veterans Memorial Park, would that be okay?
Yes, yes, anything that would, that would focus on, on the individuals who served the country. Not only the Second World War, but I think there was a count of about 50 during the Second World War in that little tiny community. And that community consisted not only, maybe 12, 12 families. But they were interrelated, making it one, one whole family, if you, if you will, in that, in that little area. So, but then you have Vietnam veterans. You have a lot of veterans there that, that never served in, in wartime. But there's a whole slew of individuals that, that came out of that little, little area.
Certainly Korean war.
Yeah.
Okay, so we have the motion to call it the Bryn Mawr Veterans Park.
Memorial.
Bryn Mawr Veterans Memorial Park.
Because I bring up on a question at the, at one of the meetings, I was told that some of the veterans is still alive.
Well, there's a very few.
Mr. Hal Paxton is one of them. So, I don't want to put his name down on the plaque and.
Well, we'll add them when the time comes.
Who's that them is?
Fifty years in that.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, at first, we talked about continuing, but we're going to take it.
Oh, let's, let's go ahead and just.
Okay, I'm in favor of Bryn Mawr Veterans Memorial Park. Aye. Opposed?
No.
Motion passes. Thank you.
I thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Item 23, I was going to spend more time on this, but it is getting very, very late. So, let me just make a quick comment about the idea here. And Mr. Hall, our city manager's been involved with this, Mr. Holloway, about basically using some of the redevelopment project monies to give homeowners the opportunity to put solar systems on their houses. And this would be citywide. We could float bonds through the redevelopment agency. Once we determine what the level of interest was on a project like this, it would help the city of Loma Linda be more environmentally. the city of Loma Linda be more environmentally green. It could save money eventually, and it would be a good use of redevelopment agency dollars and the funding capabilities that come with it. That's the concept. If we're inclined to support this kind of concept, we can ask city staff to proceed and study it a little bit more, but don't wanna ask staff to look at it unless there was general support for this idea.
I think it's something that we wanna get doing as soon as we can. We wanna look at it. A lot of us have talked about this, and tonight, obviously, we can just ask staff to begin to look at it, but I strongly support doing this. I've had some people talk to me in town about how, hey, their electrical bills are getting, and if we did this on a broad-city basis, it might make it more feasible for more people to get into this on a much bigger scale.
I'd fully concur and would like to see what we come up with. Obviously, gonna have to look at the details to make a final decision. Kind of ironic that today, I guess while I was at work, must've gotten approval from the city inspector and turned on my latest addition to my solar electric panel, so got to dash home briefly before the meeting and see the first generation from the ones I've added on since my first project, and it's, I think, a way to go. The only question, I think, is timing. The costs are continuing to come down, but hopefully, if we can help people along that way, it'd be great.
This might be an opportunity for business development opportunities as well, because we could, for example, have a residential supplier use Loma Linda address as point of sale for this kind of project.
Absolutely, and we wanna encourage business also to go in for this.
Okay, it's general indication, I think, that the city council and redevelopment agency kinda likes the idea, so just see what you can put together on it.
Might talk to the institutions, too.
Okay, item 24. Who's bringing this forward?
The historical commission had forwarded this to the city council. However, the chair was not able to be here this evening. The recommendation is for the council to consider purchase of Loma Linda University's Centennial Pathway papers to commemorate important city events, people, in recognition of shared history of the city, university, and medical center. And included is some literature that we pulled from the pathway website, and there are, I think, three levels of papers and markers. $100 for a weekday paper, $200 for a Sabbath paper, and obviously, the every seventh paper would be a Sabbath paper. And then, of course, there are historical markers. And the markers are, I think, $3,500. And I'm not sure... We need to check on that. I'm not sure that any of those would actually be available. I think those probably have already been slated for major institutional historical dates and events.
Could I ask the city attorney? I don't know if this arises to a level of potential conflict of interest for those of us that have connections with Loma Linda University and like to have your opinion before we go any further?
Well, I was trying to determine... Presumably, this would be a financial commitment that would benefit the institution. So the answer probably is that we should consider this to be one of those where there could be a conflict of interest.
Question, how would it benefit? I mean, let's just say that the city requested permission to locate a historic marker on university property. Would that be considered... Would we have to have a conflict of interest in that? Is that benefiting anybody? Is it just... Is there something else? Just placing a historic marker?
It's a donation. It's a fundraising effort. I'm not clear as to what the funds would be used for by the...
I believe it pays for the pathway. The donations pay for the...
The brick?
Yeah, for the papers and allow the construction to occur.
They're all, you know, they gotta write on them, and there's a lot of engraving and stuff.
Yeah.
I mean, it's just locating the historic marker on the university property. I mean, you'd have to make that judgment.
Well, if the city donated markers that were installed, that would be something a little bit different, but here, it appears that they're asking for donations to basically pay for a walkway, which would save the institution the cost of paying for the walkway themselves. So there would be a financial interest on the part of the institution, and so the conflict issues...
Mr. City Attorney, can we make this easy? As mayor, would I have the authority to just make this decision? It's a fairly minor item, so that we don't have to take a council vote on it.
If the council has previously allocated funds to the mayor's discretion up to a certain amount...
We haven't done that.
You possibly could.
Do we need to draw straws, or shall we just continue this item?
What else did you wish to do? Buy one paper, 10, 20? I mean, there's money in the budget. If you want me to spend 200 bucks, I can spend 200 bucks.
Yeah, maybe the city manager has the discretion, maybe even if I don't. Why don't we just discuss this later and see how much authority we've got? Let's keep going. Anything else to come before the council this evening?
Item number 25.
What's your project ceremony, announcements about time?
Yeah, I just took note of that, but I guess, go ahead and mention them, Jarv.
Yes, sir. I'd like to mention that we'll have a ribbon-cutting ceremony for Bryn Mawr Veterans Memorial Park on May 20 at 5:00 p.m. at the park. And then, on May 22nd, we'll have a groundbreaking ceremony for the widening of Mountain View Avenue Bridge, and that will be at the parking lot of the baseball field. And then, on May 28 at 4:30, there will be a ribbon-cutting for the library addition, and it will be at the library.
Well, Jarv, you've been busy.
Yes, sir.
You sure have.
And today, we have a ribbon-cutting for the Oxy Treatment Plant and the upgrading of the Mountain View Number Threes.
Boy, you can take a break after all this. You've done a good job for us.
Take a rest of the day off.
Stand.
One quick item. Couldn't help but think tonight with a brief presentation from Sandbag about the Anderson ITN interchange. Has Sandbag taken any position on Prop 98 and 99, and whether if changes to eminent domain law would derail that project, or is it clearly a governmental project that would not be affected by either of those propositions?
Well, you asked a dual question. They have taken action concerning 98 and 99, and the action they took was to support Prop 99 and to oppose Prop 98. It was a debated issue, and I must admit that I didn't fully agree with the decisions they made, but they are supporting 99. As far as whether eminent domain would be a factor on the Anderson Tepicine project, I think the answer is no, it would not, because it's clearly a governmental project. There is no concept here of purchasing any land for anything other than a governmental project.
Yeah, that was my understanding. Just wanted to make sure that was clear, because certainly, those are important initiatives, and my understanding is exactly that, that governmental projects really aren't impacted by any of those changes, but there may be other reasons that it's important to take a position.
I'm glad you brought up that project, however, because I forgot to mention that on the Major Projects Committee, which meets Thursday morning at 9:00, they are letting one of the major contracts to proceed with this particular project. To accompany... What's on the agenda is to award a contract to Tetra Tech for environmental design and review and whatever those engineering firms do. Sorry, Jarv, I don't know what all they do.
Does it have to go through that MICA or whatever it is?
Oh, yeah. It's definitely... It's... That's where it is right now, is going to do some environmental work. I don't know what all it is, Troy. It seems to change all the time, but hopefully, there won't be any kangaroo rats near that place. Anyway, anything else to come before the council? We are adjourned.
RDA will be in brief session. Any items to be added or deleted? Anybody wishes to make a comment, please come forward on any item not on the agenda? No, thank you. All right, we have one brief chamber of commerce matter. We simply need a request for disbursement funds approved. All right, any opposition? Seeing none, approved. Reports, projects? If not, we are adjourned. Thank you.